Which zoning Board of Appeals public hearing this Wednesday, January 29th, 2020. I guess we'll open one minute late at 7:01. Our mic box is seven. We will be hearing the cases that are listed with some exceptions that I'll get to in a moment. We expect a lengthy hearing tonight, so the board will attend to business until 10:30 this evening. Any cases that aren't resolved by 10:30 are going to be continued through our next meeting in February. We've advised all the applicants of that, and three of them have asked for continuances. But before we get there, we'll ask the board to introduce themselves, please. Chris Murphy.
Kathleen Muller.
Jim Hilliard.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
Mike Capoli.
And Shayla Delaney, Board Secretary.
Okay. On this first motion, we're going to have a voting, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, me, and Mr. Donahue. And I will make the motion that we, uh, let's see. Continue by their request. Case 2020-04, which will be the first case we will hear on February 26th, 2020. Case number 2020-06, which will be the second case we will hear on February 26th, 2020. Right? And case 2020-07, which will be the third case we will hear at our meeting on February 26th, 2020. Could I have a motion, a second on that motion, please?
Seconded.
Ms. Muller, any discussion by the board? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, those cases will be continued through the February meeting. Mr. Clerk, if you would call our first case, please. Yeah, there are some seats down in front, we have four seats.
Case number 2019-28, continued from, uh, 7:31-19 and from 10:30-19. Witchmere Harbor Real Estate LLC, also known as Witchmere Beach Resort, through its agent attorney Andrew Singer, has applied for amendment to special permit number 10-39, or in the alternative, a new special permit to alter, extend, or change a pre-existing non-conforming recreation or amusement service in a restaurant facility. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-54B, Set 4th and Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 23 Snow In Road, Unit 12, Map 8, Parcel P2-12, in the RH3 in the RL Zoning District.
Okay, I should note, just before we get going, that in a number of cases, we have received correspondence. It's in the file, we're not going to read it tonight, we'll be here till the March meeting if we do that. But all correspondence has been received and reviewed by the board members. At the appropriate time, I will be inviting the public to speak on each case. Those of you that are here that submitted letters, I'm going to ask that you don't simply get up and read the letter. Please come up and tell us the relevant points if you would, we have read the letters. When you make your presentation, that is, members of the public, I'd like you to come to the podium, there's a microphone there, and identify yourselves and your street numbers, and speak up nice and loudly so we can hear, well, me in particular can hear. Hearing challenged. And I, any questions that the public has of the applicants? If you could just address them to me, and if appropriate, then I'll have the applicants respond, just so we keep some order in the process.
Jim and Ryer, we want to make mention of the audio and videotape.
Oh, yes. And last but not least, we are being video recorded over there. This meeting will be posted on the Channel 18 YouTube website tomorrow or the day after. So with all of that introduction, Attorney Singer, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and who was with you?
Yes, thank you, good evening, for the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. We have a number of people here at the table. With me is Mike Charlotte, who's the general manager of Witchmere Harbor. And we also have Bill Gantcher, who's the chief engineer. Dave McNevich, coastal engineering is the project engineer. George Kekidis is the project architect. And we have Dave Hawk, who is the landscape architect. I am going to make a presentation this evening. You have a number of materials before you. We are all here recognizing how much, what's on your agenda. We're all here to answer questions after the presentation, you know, whatever we can. As I begin the presentation, just wanted to let you know what I just handed you. The form, the first one pager, it comes from the materials we previously submitted. I just want, it was easier, I thought that you could be following along with some of the points that we're going to be discussing. The elevations that I gave you are, what we did since we were at the planning board last night is added at their request. There was some confusion over the heights because of measuring from grade elevation, so we just clarified that with some notes on those plans. As you read in the legal notice, Witchmere Harbor Real Estate LLC is the owner of the Witchmere Beach Resort. The parcel, property is located on Snow In Road, it is a split-zoned parcel. The property closest to, away from the waters in the RL Zone, the part of the property closest to the waters in the RH3 Zone. What we are here before you this evening to discuss is a redevelopment, after many years, of the beach club portion of the resort, which is at the south end of the property. And the, and I will try not to hit anyone's eyes. The plan on the left is the existing layout of the beach club now, with the swimming pools, the coastal pavilion, the beach, beach house grill restaurant. This plan here, and you have copies, you should have color-reduced copies of this plan with you. This is the proposal for the beach club that we'll be discussing at de. Property is 15 acres or so, and is improved with this multi-use function and resort facility. There are a number of uses on the property. As I mentioned, the only thing we're talking about tonight is the beach club itself. We are requesting permission to make improvements to the beach club, as shown on those plans. It has been, it's pretty outdated at this point, going on 28 years old, 27, 28 years since it was last redone. And what they are proposing to do is to, as you can see on the plans, basically reconfigure and relay out and improve what is there. Specifically, that will involve relocating the coastal pavilion, which is along the south end of the property horizontally now. It'll be relocated in this position, physically picked up and moved, and with an addition off the north end with a roof extension to have a small area for bathrooms. The other provision, the beach house grill building here, which is a building that's in the floodplain, is going to be rebuilt and expanded here to comply with floodplain regulations. And then, obviously, you can see the interior changes. Right now, the main goal there is to realign the pools, add green space that's, you know, within that area instead of just the concrete fields that are around the swimming pools now. I mean, that is the main proposal in a nutshell, as far as just what's being done. There's going to be new access to the beach club, and there's a new turnaround, as you can see, which is all on property. It's not a road, but there's the driveway that comes up here, there'll be a new, better way to have people be able to be dropped off, and then people can go park, which right now, it's, if you, when you've been down there, it just dead-ends. The driveway goes up there and just stops. The last time we were here before you, it's been a number of years, only a few of you might remember, it was about six, eight years ago, we were here for, to build some new residential condominiums in a new building in the middle of the property. That was approved, ultimately it was not built when the market changed. So what they were looking at now is to try to refresh, redo, and improve the beach club. The beach club itself will continue to be a private facility. And the replacement beach grill dining facilities, which is the building on the left-hand side, as you're looking at the plan, is going to continue to not be open to the public. It is for the beach club use, beach club members, guests' use. It is a private facility. There will be no change in the approved density and use on the property, there'll be no change in the parking demand, and we'll discuss all of that. The proposal is to continue the existing use with more efficient, more attractive, and better guest experience amenities to enhance the guest experience. Why, so why are we here? The use of the property has been before this board many times over the years because it is and has been deemed pre-existing non-conforming. It's been there simply for so many decades that it predated when zoning came in to regulate the recreation amusement services and the restaurant use. So we've been back before you many times over the years for special permits. The other non-conformities on the site are site coverage and amenities coverage. Those have always been looked at, they've always been higher than what's currently allowed. And as you'll hear tonight, there's going to be some slight reductions in both of those non-conformities. Specifically, under the bylaw, we're asking for permission to either amend special permit in case number 10-39, which is the last time you looked at the beach club, or in the alternative, a new special permit, at different times over the years, the board has chosen to grant the special permits in different fashions. But either one, it's the same legal threshold that you're looking at, as well as under Mass. General Law's 48, Section 6. We're seeking to alter, extend, and change the pre-existing non-conforming uses on the property. We would respectfully submit that the desired relief can be granted in accordance with the findings you have to make under the law, which is, is the proposal going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and the community than what's there today? We'd respectfully submit that it will not be, for a number of reasons. The, as I mentioned, there'll be no change in the existing private beach club use of the property. The proposed work, everything you see on that plan right there, conforms to the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. Setbacks, conform, as I mentioned, building, building coverage on the entire site will conform. It's going to be 11.4% with this proposal, which is less than the 15% that is allowed. The site coverage is going to be reduced from 40.1% to 39.9. It's still non-conforming naturally, but it is, as with most of the projects, and we've come back before you, gets, it goes in the right direction. The same with the amenities coverage, which is going to go from 29.9 to 28.5. One of the quirks of the bylaw for this type of a use is that you can have only 15% amenities coverage. But that includes not only things like golf courses, basketball courts, swimming pools, and things like that, but it also includes parking. And so on a site like this, you're always going to be over because when you provide the provided parking, all those amenities will usually take you over. But again, we're going in the right direction. Green space will be increasing to 397,424 plus or minus square feet, which is approximately 60.1% of the site. The replacement building, the beach grill building here, it will be elevated to meet current floodplain regulations. The existing building, which includes a inhabited basement level and the main level, are well into the floodplain, naturally enough, with all the equipment, the pool equipments in there. And the new building will be elevated to meet those regulations, and we submit will result in a significant improvement to protection of the environment. The kitchen, the pool, and building mechanical equipment and the structure will all be raised above base flood elevation. And when you look at the elevations, though, that is clearly demonstrated for your review on those plans. Also, the relocated coastal pavilion, which is this building, right now, this structure is completely within the velocity zone. By moving it back here and changing its orientation, it's actually going to be removed from the velocity zone completely and be in a much less environmentally sensitive portion of the property. It's not a large move, but it, with the way the site lays out, it works and it comes out of that zone. Maximum building height in the RH3 zoning district down here is four stories and 50 feet. If you're familiar with the property, if you look at the three-story condominium residential building on the left, that is approximately 50 feet. If you look at the plans, you will see that while the top of the cupola at the front of the relocated restaurant, which is right here, while that part, the cupola itself, will be at 48 feet, 8 inches, I believe, most of the building is either at the mid-30s and the mid-20s. And so most of the building is a much lower profile. It is the cupola at the top, at the entrance, which is the only point that's that high on the building. Last week, we were before the Conservation Commission, and they unanimously approved the plans that are before you this evening. We had been before them a couple times, and they had found that the proposal is better protective of the environment for the number of the reasons that I've already mentioned. But some of the others, in addition to complying with floodplain regulations, is that part of this proposal results in the removal of over 27,800 square feet of fertilized lawn area on the property. It also results in the removal of 128 pounds of nitrogen per year that's being applied to the ground. These, as we know, are significant benefits, getting rid of those in an environmentally sensitive zone. In addition, as I mentioned, you know, right now, when you look at the pools, it's all concrete around them. With, there's some planters, but it's mostly all concrete. This proposes a number of green areas throughout the pool area, which has been expanded back to be away from the more sensitive areas, but also to then allow for the green space in between. If you looked at the summary of reasoning that I first submitted to you, there was a long discussion in there about site coverage. The reason was that at the time, all of these green areas were proposed to be a new type of synthetic turf, which is a very permeable used product, but it is something that it would be new to the Cape. Ultimately, in working with the Conservation Commission, they were intrigued by it, but there was a question of, was it site coverage or not, which is why we had that conversation in the summary. They also wanted to look more at the mechanics of how it all works. So what we've, what we did with them is, and we agreed to, all of these green areas that are down here, except for those two, and I'll discuss those two in a minute, all of these others are going to be, for now, planted of a natural lawn, which is, does not require fertilization and chemical application. So it is different than the lawn area, so we're removing 27,000-odd square feet of fertilized lawn. The lawn areas that will be, go between the pool areas for the, for the use of the pool, beach club, will be non-fertilized. Now, what we, what the Conservation Commission wanted to do is continue to look, we submitted some studies and a whole bunch of different reports to them. They're going to, they want us to look at that, and we're going to still talk to them. So that the, in the, in the future, if, if everyone agrees that this, the other product, which doesn't require maintenance, is good, we might be back before you in the future, but we'll, we're going to talk to the Conservation Commission about that. What they did approve, however, is right down here, this is the lower deck, so the deck exists today. They permitted the use, the installation, these two sections are going to be that synthetic turf, kind of a test case, total's about 1,100 square feet. And so those will be, other than the natural lawn, there'll be that turf lawn. The reason why I go into that is that, as part of what was important to the Conservation Commission, and I submit also is an environmental benefit of the proposal, is that what you see on the plan results in a 3,500-square-foot reduction of hardscape coverage in conservation jurisdiction. It results in an overall reduction of impervious site coverage of 1,432 square feet. That's why the impervious site coverage, I told you, is going down a bit. The reason why is that, why the numbers are different, is that the hardscape is being moved away from the beach and further to the lesser sensitive parts of the, of the property. That's why, in the most sensitive parts, there's a 3,500-square-foot reduction, but it's been shifted north, and so you find, wind up with a net reduction of 1,432 square feet. So that was also seen by the Conservation Commission as a benefit, because again, we're getting more of that hardscape away from the, from the water in the beach area. As for the use of the property, as I alluded to before, there is going to be no change in the currently permitted occupancy of the property. What the board, both you and the planning board have looked at in the past, and we had, we proposed this many, many years ago, and it's worked, is that there is a cap, a maximum cap, which is a condition in your prior decisions, of 650 maximum restaurant seats shared among the various function areas on the property at any one time. So that they, and as I said last night, and I've said to the boards in the past, it means if there's a larger function in the beach club, there's going to be a smaller function up at the Harbor Club building and vice versa. So that the maximum number of seats at any one time will be and stay at the 650. The beach club is not getting bigger, the functions are not getting bigger. It is a way to improve the amenities by allowing people to spread out a little bit and having a more modern facility than the more dated facility that's there today. So we're proposing, and I would expect that in any decision, you would include, again, the maximum cap of the 650 restaurant seats at any one time. There will also be no change in the proposal, and no increase in congestion in public ways, and no detrimental impact to traffic safety. The, and this again gets to something that we've discussed with you before. With the proposal, there, at present, there are 252 parking spaces on the site. With this proposal, by, and some of those are here along the drive access. By adding the turnaround access, there will be a reduction of 15 spaces with the proposal. But what we're proposing is to continue the summer traffic management plan that the board has looked at in the past. And what that included was that, you know, with the exception of eight weekends and a few other days in the summer, in July and August, we have acres of parking that's not used. So obviously, the critical times to be looking at are those busiest eight weekends plus in the summer. And so during those times, and as necessary, the parking management plan that's in place that would be continued, and again, I would expect this to be, again, a condition in your decision, as it has been in the past, is that there is shared parking for all these different uses, for the beach club or the Harbor Club. The residential condominium units have their own dedicated parking, it's separate, different access, so that's not impacted by anything we're doing. The, the way the parking management plan works is that during the height of the season, the ownership allocates those spaces as needed among the hotel guests, the event guests, and the beach club members. Because weddings and other events are scheduled months, if not years, in advance, the owners always know what to expect, when to expect, with numbers. And so what they have is, they have buses that they use to transport guests to off-site locations when necessary during those times. All employees park off-site and are shuttled to the property, or come by bicycle. And those shuttles run from 8:00 AM to midnight on each of the weekend nights and the other nights during the height of the season that they need them. So again, they know when their employees are going to be at larger capacity, and so they implement, they have the shuttle system. They also stagger events so that most of the functions will take place when the beach club is less active, and most of the, well, when the beach club is active, you'll, we have more functions when the beach club is less active. That typically results in a daytime-nighttime split, because we all know roughly when the beach club's going to be the busiest. It's going to be, you know, late mornings or into the afternoons. As far as all drainage and stormwater, all runoff will continue to be contained on-site. The stormwater and drainage management at the southern end of the property is being upgraded. We continue to work with, Coastal Engineering's continuing to work with the engineering department on the final details of that. The, there is a wastewater treatment plant on the property in the hotel building, and these facilities at the beach club are already connected to that plant, and they're going to continue to be connected to the plant. So there's no change in that as well. The utilities will not change at the project. You have, it's a little bit of a foregone conclusion when I say there's a landscape plan, because you're looking at it. That is the detailed landscape plan, and again, if you have questions on any of this, we have all of the consultants here this evening who can discuss it with you. A lighting plan and cut sheets have been provided. There are a number of lights on that, because this is a larger facility, and there's lots of low lights and other lights. But they're all compliant with the Harwich Lighting Regulations, and they're dark sky compliant. So all of the lighting meets code. We submit that there is no negative change going to be resulting from artificial light, noise, litter, or odor. The proposal has been designed to aesthetically complement the overall property, and we hope you agree. When you look at the, for example, the design of the cupola at the entrance to the restaurant here has been designed to mirror the existing cupola design, octagon design at the coastal pavilion. We met with the planning board last night. This proposal also requires site plan review, special permit amendment, or new, the same as we've asked with you. They've asked for some additional exhibits there within their jurisdiction, and they continued us for, until their meeting in late February. As you're going to hear from some other cases tonight, including one I have, the planning board of late has been most appreciative when the Board of Appeals has actually weighed in on these types of commercial projects, so that they know, you know, is the use, which is what you're looking at, this is the use we're before you tonight, the change or the alteration of the use, even though it's not being intensified, it is being changed in how it looks, how it acts, how it's going to function, whether or not that is acceptable to the Board of Appeals, because that's your jurisdiction. And so we look forward to having that conversation with you tonight, and hopefully with your, with your support, of being able to report that to the planning board when we go see them in February. Also, last night, the, there was a couple questions, or a question and a request from the fire inspector who's here this evening, and so I wanted to mention those, because again, they go to the substantial detriment or not. There, he had asked about access into the pool area for, you know, safety, if someone gets hurt or, you know, they need to get in there. And there are multiple gates, there are gates here, 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 here. And the one he asked about was this portion of the property. These are the residential condos here. There is a gate right here, and as we said last night, and I'm saying it again for the record tonight, that gate will either be unlocked, or it will have a, some sort of a entry with a knock box or something for the fire department, and we'll work with the fire department to ensure that they have prompt access to the pool area, which is what they asked for. They also inquired about, not infrequently, as we learned last night, boaters who, particularly from Stone Horse, the sailing club, because their boats are right out where the, where the jetty takes that turn out in the harbor. If there are issues with the boaters regarding the jetty, or if they need to get out there, the quickest way out there is through the beach resort property. And so the fire inspector had asked about that, and we had committed that, again, the ownership will continue to work with the fire department on facilitating that to the best they can. You know, when the fire department needs to get out there, if someone from the yacht club or elsewhere, you know, needs to get out to the jetty, or someone, a member of the public hurts themselves or whatever, so that that will be able to be accessed. So that is something I wanted to state for the record, that we had stated last night as well. Finally, we submit that this proposal, as outlined on the plans, will not adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of the town. We believe it's going to be an exciting upgrade and refreshing of the beach club facilities. It will result in significant environmental benefits, and we submit will not raise any, we would say no detriment, but certainly no substantial detriment to the neighborhood and the community over what is there today and what has been there for many, many decades. With that, we, again, will be happy to answer any questions, and we appreciate your time, and look forward to you making findings and voting for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Singer. We'll have voting, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, me, and Mr. Donahue. So we will be the five. Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Capoli will not vote, but they certainly will participate and ask any questions they might have. So we'll kick it off with Mr. Murphy.
Really, the main question I had coming in, I think you answered most of it, was the permeable area. It looked like it was going to be artificial, meaning it was going to be basically non-pervious, but it sounds like it is something that the water can go through. Now, it's natural grass, but if you do go to the other one, it'll also remain permeable, right?
Yes, interestingly, and Mr. McNevich could answer more detail, but the studies they have, it's actually more permeable than grass and loam, because that product, which again, is only at this point on the lower deck, but that product is actually approximately eight times more permeable than natural lawn.
And what was their concern, that they did not want it?
The concern, it wasn't that they did not want it, I think they actually are intrigued by it, but they wanted more information about, as you saw in, well, you might not have seen the staff report from last night, the planning. They wanted to ensure the scientific studies that no materials, that it won't shed, that it won't leach any materials from that. And there's, that's the scientific report we gave them at the last meeting, but they, it's like this thick. So we needed more time to, to review it, and it's not, and it's not, it wasn't key to the overall scope of refreshing the beach club, but those were the questions.
And the lighting, is that going to change lighting density, more light in this entire plan? Or will it be similar to what you currently have?
Well, it complies with all the lighting regulations. Let me, where is Mr. Hawk? Who would want to answer that? Let me, where is, who would want to answer that? George? You'll have to come up, yeah. I'm going to pick people as I get questions, if that's okay.
George Kukitis, Kukitis, George Design Group Architects. We have a lighting consultant who laid out the plan, and again, as Andrew mentioned, it's very low luster, it's, it's not going to, it is going to be more than what's there, only because the, the, the structure and everything is a little bit different than, than what's there now. But we can, I don't know how to answer anything more than that.
Well, no, let's say, so it'll be, it'll be maybe more, as you said, but it's going to be complying, and it's going to be lower, and, because as you can see, there's more walkways. Ms. Mueller.
Yes, I believe you said you won't say there will be no detriment, but no substantial detriment.
Well, I said I don't think there's any detriment, but even if you did find there was some detriment, we would say it's not substantially more.
Oh, you allowed for some detriment, and I wondered what that is.
Oh, I don't think there is, but I didn't want to presuppose that you wouldn't necessarily find that.
And my second question is, what is the timetable for this project?
They would like to begin construction after this season, later this year, and it would be built over the winter and in the early spring. The idea would be to be done before next season, but it would not be built in the season. They have commitments and need to honor all that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, have you had any complaints from the neighbors with your existing use over the last couple of years?
I've been there for three years. I haven't, I haven't personally.
Do you have private memberships and, which includes what, social memberships as well as private membership? How does that work?
It's a, it's a beach and pool membership, so it's typically eight or nine weeks. We typically open the beach club mid-June, and it closes after, after Labor Day.
And do you have a limit on the number of social memberships you have?
Well, we don't refer them as social, but they're beach and pool members, family memberships. We're probably not even close to where we could be if we chose to be. Today, there's probably 240 beach and pool memberships, and not all of those families are active, so depending.
Will this result in more memberships?
No, absolutely not.
So, this is basically to serve your current members?
Yes.
What about issues of weddings and private parties? Is this being done in any way to result in more, more weddings, parties, or whatever?
We're very content with the number of weddings and events that we do now, so absolutely not.
So, if I heard you correctly, there'll be no increase in capacity?
That's correct.
With respect to any of the functions that you currently have?
That's correct.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. In the proposed beach grill, are you going to have any rooms in there, in the lower level or anything?
In, in, well, the lower level, which is being elevated to meet the floodplain, under the floodplain regulations, and I'll answer this, Dave McNevish can jump up if I say it wrong. You're allowed to have parking and storage. Most, many people, there'll be no parking under this building. There will be some storage, but there's also access down there, if you look at the floor plans, from the elevator to get food service out to the lower deck, because that lower deck is a lower deck. So, they can come under that to bring food service out.
Okay. And I assume in your turnaround here, you're not going to put up parking there. It's just for dropping off or?
Picking up or dropping off. Yes. Yeah, there'll be some, if you're familiar, wait till George. Right now, up and down this entire way, there's grass parking on either side. This will remain, is grass parking, but this area is just for the drop-off.
Okay. And what are your hours of operation for the pool in general? How late at night?
Typically, the pool opens at 10:00 daily, during that timeframe that I mentioned before, mid-June through Labor Day, and then it closes at 6:00. The only deviation from that is when we offer dinner for the members on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings under coastal. Which is the coastal is, is this pavilion, right there? So, the pools, the pools will always close at 6:00 PM, in terms of the bathing and the amenity use, and then for dining for the members, it might go till 9:30, 10 o'clock at night.
Okay. Do you have outdoor music during the season?
We occasionally do, not, not nightly, but we do when dinner's being served, typically once or twice a week, that we'll offer it from 5:00 to 7:00, 6:00 to 8:00.
Okay. No, the only reason, I mean, this is way down away from the houses, but, you know, there's been a lot of, what's the word, adverse comments about the music in Harwich Port itself, so I just was curious. I don't think it's an issue way down there, but the last thing, and you might, might not be able to tell me, but I know, I believe you're still subject to an environmental lawsuit. Can you just give us a status update on that? Wasn't it a discharge suit by one of the environmental groups?
Yes. So, we were just, we were just awarded favorable ruling by the, by the court. It's Conservation Law Foundation that was, had the matter against us and one other entity in Harwich, and it was awarded in our favor just in the past month. So, there is a notice of appeal that may take place by the party that was having the, having the suit, but we were found, we were found not to be doing anything wrong, and it was a meritless suit, just to be quite frank.
Okay, great.
And it was unrelated to zoning, but it was something that's been in the papers, absolutely. Fully compliant with the Mass DEP.
Right, well, just, you know, substantial impact. I mean, that could have an impact if you're polluting the harbor, that's why I raised the question.
Yeah. Well, no, the project's in full compliance with all DEP requirements.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further. Mr. Donahue.
I have a question with regard to parking. You indicated during your presentation that when there are weddings and events, that you employ a shuttle system. Where do those vehicles get parked?
We have a five-acre parcel, our tennis center, which is about a mile or so down the road. So, we have our employees park off-site, and then we have a van driver, that's one of the members of the staff, that will take them back and forth.
All right. So, the employees have parking in this particular area as well? Or they rely upon public parking?
Are you referring to the tennis center or at the club itself?
I'm referring to if they're shuttled and there's no, not enough parking for your employees, and they have to park at another location. Is it the tennis center you're referring to they park at?
Yes, yes.
All right. The other question I had was with regard to, the way the place is set up right now, if I recall, there's a sort of a shed, a small building. At the main entrance, you have a couple of young people generally sitting in there, I think, to greet the members as they come in.
Yes, yes.
Is there any communication system within that building? Reason I'm asking is because of public safety.
Telephone and radio.
Telephone and radio. All right. So, they have communication with, say, a child came over and was concerned about a parent or something, they can also call?
Immediately reach the front office, who has the ability to reach out to any of the, the manager and leadership.
Now, with regard to the gate that you've indicated, which is on the, where the new material is on the ground there, what is the width of that gate?
Mr. Hawk?
I think, or we can answer. Excuse me, for the record, Dave Hawk, Hawk Design. I believe we're at four feet there, and, you know, obviously, it can, you know, get larger if need be.
The reason I ask that question, I know there's other gates on the property, but is there a gate that's wide enough? Should in an emergency, an ambulance have to be brought in to bring it up directly to where, around the pool area, not bringing it in directly, it can't be opened up to get the ambulance back in, in there, and it could provide for medical attention if they have to get up for an emergency?
The, the, the pool itself, it, well, excuse me, the pool area itself is elevated, so you couldn't get an ambulance in there. However, this driveway in front, this driveway in front of the condominium, the residential condominiums, comes all the way down and past it, so an ambulance can come right there to the gate, and an ambulance can pull up right at all the entrance points.
There are other areas that are double gates also, the top areas, so there's a number of access points. There's five access points all the way around the pool. There are some double gates and some single gates that are shown.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong.
Well, the inspector's here, so let me, can I ask the inspector a question?
Sure.
In regard to access for the trucks, obviously, once have a template that you've gone over, and you've got the engine in and the tower, yeah.
Bruce Young, I'm the fire inspector. I have talked with the Witchmere Harbor Beach Club about access, and it was a concern mostly out onto the beach, the jetty, and in front of the condos, that we have great difficulty getting out, getting out there if someone's on the jetty. We do have, all our animals is a four-wheel drive now, so we do have access to the beach, but they are the closest point to us rendering aid to somebody that might be on the beach, whether it be cardiac arrest or somebody. We have had boats go up onto that jetty, and it's, access out there is really difficult, and they've been very helpful in allowing us to get out there onto that property. It is private property, so they've worked very well with me with that access gate in the southeast corner that we're pointing out. That is a road to those condos. We have good access here with our ladder truck, our engine, and even on the west side of the property where that brick is, we can put a small cart down alongside that new building that they're, they're proposing, where they're tearing it down. We do have access there as well, if we had to get like a Ford Explorer, one of the cars out there too, for access to that side of the pavilion.
Great, appreciate it. And then I had a question, it's a little, forgive me, it's a little confusing to me about the, the height and the determination, particularly for, I guess you would, not the first floor, but the base flood?
Yep.
And how is that determine the height, that height? Is it based on the floodplain itself, or?
It is. The Harwich zoning by law define, in a floodplain, it defines height as rising from the base flood elevation. In this case, the base flood elevation is elevation 12, and so when you, and this is what gets confusing, when you look at the plans, you see elevation numbers, but we, that's why we also added the actual height numbers, because elevation gets confusing.
That helps.
But, yeah, so that's where it's measured from, is elevation 12 on this particular area of the site.
Okay, so any, any area in that floodplain that would have to be raised at least 12 feet?
Well, yes, it gets a little bit, it gets a little bit trickier in the sense that if you were in a velocity zone, you have to be two feet above the base flood elevation. So, in this case, it's, it's all outside the velocity zone, correct?
The bottom of the structure is two feet above 12 feet, so is that 15?
So, it's two.
Yeah.
But that's part of the measurement of the height.
So, it's limited to that height, right? So, I mean, you couldn't go over that height either, could you? I mean, it would have to be 12 feet.
You have to, correct.
Right, not under, not over.
No, with the velocity zone, you have to be two feet above that, and then from the 12 feet, you have the 50 feet, so it would be 62, and we're, we're below that.
Okay, so then the total with the cupola and everything is, is how many feet then, again?
Well, to the top of the cupola is about 44 feet, that's from grade, so that's a vertical dimension.
Yes.
But we're still approximately about eight feet below the, the height max that we could go to.
Right, because the flood.
Correct. Doesn't count.
And we put that on, there's a dotted line across the top on sheet A 2.0, which shows what the 50 feet would be, and it shows how, where the building's much lower than that. But we put that on there again to try to help illustrate.
I appreciate that, because it's something, obviously, we're all going to see a lot more of as time goes on. Great, that answers my question, and I can also attest for the history of that, because we had junior prom there. A long time ago. Thank you.
Mr. Coppoli.
You had testified earlier that you didn't expect the number of members to increase?
Mm-hmm.
The number of seats in the restaurants are tied to different permits that you have, but there's no cap on membership, is there?
There actually was a cap on membership. Again, it was not a realistic cap in the sense of, I think it was like 600 members, but they've never been close to that, but.
But is that cap something internal, or something that is tied to another decision or requirement by another board?
I believe it was, it's based in part on parking and septic.
And occupancy, is there an occupancy, what is the occupancy?
That would come under fire and, and state law, yeah.
Well, state building code would govern all that, absolutely, but.
You're doing a very nice improvement here, so maybe a lot more people would want to join your club, so I'm just wondering if the.
Well, and to answer, I just, that was Dave McNevish, the engineer, so I just wanted to clarify what I said, the numbers are not tied to the septic, because the septic is a totally different, because it's on the discharge permit. It's more a function of, well, in part, it's a function of parking, and it's a function of what you're approving, and what we're saying we want to continue. You know, we're not asking for any increases.
So, there is no actual membership cap then?
I'm not sure how I would, how I would answer that. I mean, I think we're well below anywhere that we could be, but I think the answer to your question, you commented that there might be more interest in wanting to join the club because of the project that we're doing, but we don't want to disturb the balance. I mean, that's a very, that's a very conscious effort that we've made by what we're doing. So, in a given season, if we have, for example, 15 new memberships, and again, the way that the membership works for us, you're not going to have a large pool of people, because it's a 12-mile radius, basically, if you're going to join the club. If you've got a lovely second home in Falmouth, you're not going to join the club, you're not going to make that trek down Route 6 to spend the day with your family. So, it's typically a 12-mile radius, so it's, it's not, when it's not going to increase. So, if we have 10 or 15 new members that join in a given season, we might lose three, four, or five that sell their Cape home, they're retiring, they're moving off to Europe, they're traveling for the season, the kids have aged out, there's a lot of different reasons, so the balance has been, has been carefully managed.
And the parking spots, also, what, what permit are those spots tied to, is, as opposed to just the coverage? Is there a particular permit that maxes out your number of parking spots?
It's, it's called U. It's the zoning by law.
I didn't know if it was, if there was another exception or agreement.
No, it's just, it's what, it's what, when it first started, when we, when the redevelopment started 20, 30-plus years ago, there was an existing number of parking, and so that number was really a baseline, because that's what was there, and it's been upgraded over time. But then what it did is it got folded into both the planning board and the Board of Appeals' decisions over time as conditions.
I was just wondering if the, if the planning board had any specific requirements on parking for you?
No, the specific requirements are in the zoning by law, what's required for the uses, and the shared parking, in the parking management plan.
You said, you stated that you were going to be using natural lawn and no fertilizer on a significant number of square feet there?
Yeah, no, there's going to be no long-term fertilizer or application on, well, everything that's on green on this, except those two sections right there, which don't need anything, because they're synthetic.
Was that an agreement you entered into with the Conservation Commission, that you would not use chemicals?
Yes.
Fertilizers?
Yes.
It was, okay.
It was at their request. When we were before the, originally before them, they are strongly urging all owners in town, not just, you know, to try to limit the use of nitrogen, fertilizers that lead to nitrogen, and they asked, and they're asking all project applicants to come before them to try to improve that. And so this was something we were able to do through the design process with them, and obviously, you know, we're talking 27,000 square feet, which is, because it's a big site. So, it's obviously much bigger than if it was just your private home, and they're asking to do the same thing.
Yes. So, that is a condition of their approval?
It will be. They're writing their order of conditions now, it was part of the vote, and that'll be a condition in their order of conditions, which will run with the property the same way your decisions and the planning board will.
All right. That's it for it now, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this application? If so, please go over to the podium. Hearing no one, seeing no one getting up, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
The second.
Mr. Donahue, second. Public hearing closed. Discussion by the board. Mr. Murphy.
I have no, no points to bring up.
Ms. Mueller.
I have no more questions.
I have no questions. I think the issue, whether or not it could create a substantial detriment, I believe has been answered, because it's a facility that caters to the public privately, this doesn't appear to be increasing the use. And if it's not going to increase the use, I don't see any substantial detriment. It's, it's the same use, if I understand this correctly, that has been for the past 20-some-odd years. It's not going to increase it, it's not going to even increase the traffic. I don't have any issues with the permit.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see any substantial detriment to the neighborhood. They're basically sort of rearranging and somewhat changing the dimensions of what's every, already there, but certainly no change of use. already there, but certainly no change of use. Do we want to do this as an amendment to the existing special permit board, or grant them a new one?
I think it should be a new permit.
I kind of agree, because there's, we, I think we've amended it, and it gets a little confusing. My preference would be to do a new one, yeah. Mr. Donahue.
When would you anticipate starting this project?
Early October.
After the season?
Yeah.
After the season. I anticipate being open prior to this next season.
By Memorial Day, on the following season.
Mr. Armstrong.
No questions.
Mr. Capoli.
I agree with Mr. Hilliard, but I would also suggest we add the usual clause of no substantial demolition, construction.
I'm not sure we need that, they've got so much parking there.
They do, but if that road is so narrow, you can, I mean, I have a little less.
Oh, the access road?
Snow-in road. I think that we need to put that in there.
Okay, I have no problem. That would be no significant demolition, construction, new landscaping in any year during the period June 30 through Labor Day, right? Any comment to that, Attorney Singer, is that okay?
No, it's fine, that's, you've done it before.
You heard, I know, you're right.
Heard it before, yeah.
The access road, yeah, during the summer, but they're not going to do that anyway, that would kill your business.
It won't be.
Kill your business. All right, I will, unless anybody has any further comment, we'll take a motion on the case itself, please.
I move to approve a new special permit to alter, extend, or change pre-existing non-conforming recreation or amusement services and restaurant facility pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325-54B, as set forth in Mass Generalize Chapter 40A 6, property located at 23 Snow-In Road, Unit 12, MAP 8, Parcel T2-12, the RH3 and RL zoning districts. The condition would be that there would be no major substantial work during the period June 30th to Labor Day.
Oh, okay, I'm just going to give you the wording.
Okay. Want me to repeat that?
Or just, just the condition?
Look, where is the condition? Oh, this? Condition's here? No. I don't see any.
There it is here.
Okay. Because the property is in a closed residential location, there can be no substantial demolition, external construction, or new substantial landscaping in any year during the period 30 June through Labor Day. That's the condition.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
A second?
Second by?
Mr. Murphy.
Who made the second?
Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Murphy, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit is granted, thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate it. Very nice presentation, and a nice project.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Singer, would you like some of these documents?
Yeah.
Yeah. Costs somebody money to produce them.
All right, Attorney Singer, I've got this massive package of plans here. These the ones you want me to stamp in?
Yes, plus this.
Let me ask you a question.
This one I have.
Where is all this going to be located?
All right.
All this construction?
The one they just had?
Yeah.
Down on Snow-In Road?
Or the beach.
Yeah, all the way to the beach. Have you been down there?
Yeah, yeah.
Very end of the beach, very end of the road. It's a private, there's actually a town beach down there.
Yeah, a little beach.
Little beach, right next to there.
The other question I have is that, is there going to be any construction over here where the go-kart tracks?
Hope that's not going to...
I think that's a case tonight, yeah.
That's a case tomorrow?
There'll be a case tonight. It's like three or four from now.
Oh, it is three or four from now?
I think so. I don't have the exact schedule, that would be over there, but yeah, that is tonight.
Are they going to pass whether they're going to do it?
I believe so, that's, that would be the option, that would be the goal, that night can be out.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that this one was...
Yeah, you didn't say this one.
No, but I think the reason is that they didn't ask.
Oh, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I was a player. 10:30.
You retired now, or are you still?
I'm retired.
You are retired?
Yeah.
You weren't when you first went to Harvard, right?
I was close.
Oh, I thought you were.
Oh, yeah.
You're done, huh?
I'm done.
People have different favorite things that they...
I was going to ask. Probably a lot of the apartments where you want to... You could sort through where my work for one... Yeah, we actually did research on leaching and all that. I'm sure it's been researched. I think we're going to have a design for that use, right?
I guess so, yeah.
So if you want to...
What did he say, more per?
Yes, but then, because it's, it's like, it's basic, you said, a bit on Asher. We put water in it, it's great. It's basically like a netting.
A net, right.
As opposed to hard, hard background that would take a while to clean.
The 137?
Shop at the same place.
Yeah, it was another one, but I visited it a while ago, so I...
Thanks.
There's not much there.
Yeah, there's not much there.
It's real system.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
Forgot to bring my card.
There's more chairs here, folks, if you want to take a chair. Mr. Hilliard, you call the next case, I guess? I think we're set. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to talk outside, please. Ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 2019-38, continued from December the 4th, 2019. John Matthews of West Newbury Development Corporation, through his agent, Abigail Rose of Robert B. Our Company, has applied for a special permit for temporary change of use in order to store materials and construction equipment associated with Town of Howard Sewer Project. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, Section 325-54, Table 1, Use Regulations, PP 2, Line 3, Essential Services, as set forth in Mass Generalize Chapter 40A, Section 6. Property is located at 160 Route 137, MAP 86, Parcel M12-2, in the CH2 zoning district.
Okay, we'll have voting on this case. Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, me, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. You could introduce yourselves, please.
Yes, I'm Christopher Hour from Robert Our Company, my niece...
Abigail Rose, Robert Our Company.
Okay, present your application.
We're here in front of you regards the special permit, and niece Howard's here of a vacant building, commercial vacant building that was there. As most of you all know, we're doing the sewer project for the Town of Howard. The project consists of roughly 36,000 feet of sewer pipe over a couple-year project. We, in the contract, needed to supply office space for the inspectors and ourself, as in to utilize either office trailers or an existing office building. And we were fortunate enough to find an existing old building there that was vacant that we were able to use. With using that building, it was cleared to a certain area before, and there was some scrub pine there, and we cleared some of the overgrowth that was there, not cleared like forest, and we fenced it off and put a vinyl screen on the fence, and we set up offices there for the inspector, for inspecting the town's benefit, and for our field office for ourself. Having a facility there benefits us and the town. There's approximately 20,000 truckloads of dirt that has to be hauled in and out on these projects. I actually think it's quite a bit more, but I don't want to exaggerate. About 20% of it has to be hauled away to another facility, which we are hauling to our office in North Howard, our facility there. Without having an existing staging area there, there would be approximately 10,000 to 15,000 truckloads going through the roads through Howard Center and back to backfill these holes. This job here is not the normal, it's much deeper in areas that, that isn't, it's very deep, so there's a lot of material. So there's approximately on 137, there's approximately 20 truckloads out on one piece of pipe, and approximately 18 truckloads back on one piece of pipe. So to move the material in an efficient way without going through Howard Center, because that's about the only other alternative we have, we looked at this facility, did not realize at the time that we needed a special permit. In our past experience in other towns, where there was a commercial spot located against, adjacent to the job, the towns always said that was the better, better scenario for us. So it was our fault at the time to go in there and start this without coming in front of you, and we're here to ask for permission to utilize this, cleaning up when we're done. The man that owns the building, I believe he is planning to do something down the road, something more than what's there. I don't know that, and he never told us. But we're trying to utilize the existing facility for now, until the project's done, and we would clean up and loom grass, bring it back to its original condition, and we're asking for permission to continue using this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy.
The current, we currently have material stored there, there's big chunks of asphalt.
No asphalt.
It looked like there was someone who drove back there, none, there is none now?
No, it's only fill, crushed stone, pipe, and processed material, which is a quarry, a gravel, native gravel material. We haven't been putting chunks of asphalt there.
Okay, I saw something along the back fence, it looked like, could have been something else?
I haven't personally looked at it today, but if there is, it won't be there.
Okay. Also, you said it'll be, when the project's done, it'll be removed and returned to its initial state.
Correct.
What's the timing on that?
Well, the job, the contract date is November 2021 is the total completed date, but the majority of the construction would be done within the next year, probably, and then after that, it's the final paving, cleanup, striping, you know, so there's a lot of finals that really, there won't be materials stored there. It's just the basic next year would be the majority, and then it would taper off. But we would utilize the office until the job is over.
Ms. Muller? No further questions.
So you have satisfied the Board of Health as far as what you are going to be storing there and doing there?
I believe we've had no issue with the Board of Health, there's a, you know, existing septic system for the office building that's there and all that.
Then my only question was about the asphalt. Mr. Murphy's covered that.
And like I said, I didn't personally look at it today, but if it is there, it will be removed and it won't happen again.
Yeah.
Mr. Hilliard?
What would be your hours of operation during the week?
Right now, we're at 7 to 7 with this town selectman to try to expedite getting down 137.
No one?
Normal is 7 to 5.
No complaints from people about the hours that are currently?
If there is, they're not coming directly to us.
Okay, that's all right, just didn't know if you heard any. I have no further questions.
We're all complaining to each other.
We're trying to skip.
Under the Code, a special permit can be granted for essential services, facilities, utilities. I think this clearly meets that requirement for a special permit, but I do think we need a couple of conditions. I think we should limit the permit for two years from the date it's granted, and that'll give you plenty of time to complete the work. I also think we should make it a condition that you comply with the Board of Health input from their letter dated November 22, 2019, and basically prohibit storage of hazardous waste, or I think paving, that type of thing.
Correct.
So I think that should be a condition. I think the third condition is, within 90 days after project ends, you should clean the site and restore it to pre-existing condition, which you said you're going to do anyway.
No issue at all.
90 days, we just don't want it to drag on. I think 90 days is reasonable to finish it up.
Correct.
Mr. Donahue?
I took interest in the amount of material you see it taking out of there. I'm assuming you're getting beyond the gravity-fed area?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Getting beyond the gravity, you're still going down over 30 feet, pulling up all that material?
No, we're up around 16, 18 right now.
Right, the entire project is gravity.
I know it is.
Yeah.
All right, no further questions, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I don't, it's amazing, it's a big project, it's amazing. We don't need to make it more challenging than what it is.
We're just trying to put our head down and get through it faster, the better for everybody.
So, I appreciate it.
Mr. Capoli.
I appreciate you not trucking that through the Son of Howard.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the public wish to speak to this application? All right, seeing nobody, move to the podium. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Muller, public hearing closed. Discussion by the board. Well, I think it meets the requirement of the Code for a special permit, certainly not really more detrimental to the neighborhood as a whole. It's a project that has to be done, it has to be completed. I think it looks pretty good back there. I think they've got it secured so the materials aren't going to drift offsite, and I think the board should grant the motion for a special permit. Hearing no further discussion from the board, I'll entertain a motion in the case.
I'll make the motion. May I have that Board of Health that you read from? I'll second the motion.
Wait, wait, he hasn't made it yet.
I'm beating him to it. The board hereby approves the application from Abigail Rose of Robert Our for a special permit for temporary change of use in order to store materials, construction equipment associated with the Town of Howard Sewer Project. The application pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325-54, Table 1 of the Use Regulations, PP 2, Line 3, Essential Services, is set forth in Mass Generalize Chapter 40A, Section 6. Property located at 160 Route 137, MAP 86, Parcel M12-2, in the CH2 zoning district. The condition one would be to limit the special permit to two years from the date of its authority to, not within 90 days of the completion of the project, that the property will be restored to its original, if not better, use, and we will incorporate by reference letter from the Town of Howard's Board of Health dated November 22, 2019, request for department input in November 22.
Mr. Donahue, would you like to second that motion?
I'll, I'll take the opportunity, I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit is granted. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did I give you something I shouldn't?
No, you just gave me the Board of Health thing back.
Sure. Sure, happy to. This is on case, first case.
On this next case. I just want to say, you've seen this used to...
This is Riverside.
Yeah.
Sure. I'll take them all. Okay, that's on case number two, right?
No, this is 2020-01. These are all 20, these are all from the next case.
That's 02?
No.
These are all 01?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. My eyes won't, I can't see it.
Okay, I'm ready, if everybody's ready.
Case number 2020-01, Timothy M. Blanchard, Carrie A. Blanchard, Trust... My eyes, I couldn't see it.
Okay, I'm ready, if everybody's ready.
Case number twenty twenty dash oh-one. Timothy M. Blanchard, Kerry A. Blanchard, trustees of the K N T Realty Trust through their agent attorney Paul Tardif have applied for a variance to allow for a twenty-four foot wide newly created panhandled lot where thirty-five feet is required. Application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section three, twenty-five, eighteen Q, is set forth in Mass. Generaliz Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Property is located at two Saltwater Lane, also known as fourteen Saltwater Lane, also known as one twenty-three Riverside Drive. Map four parcels A one dash A five, A one dash A six, A one dash A seven, A eight, and A nine in the R L zoning district.
Okay, voting on this case, we will have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, me, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli. If you could introduce yourself, Attorney Tardif, for the record, please, and who's with you, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouthport. And seated with me is Tim Blanchard, who's one of the trustees, along with his wife, of the K N T Realty Trust. This is, the trust is the owner of this parcel. That has been through a lot of different machinations about where we are. We are seeking a variance tonight from the latest plan, but I think in order to understand where we are today, I think we have to go back just a little bit to give you a quick history, and I think it'll be a little clearer. First of all, in nineteen sixty-six, this property was titled in the name of Silas Phillips and Francis Phillips. In nineteen seventy-four, the parcel was then subdivided. And that is shown on the land court plan that you have on the left-hand side of that board. I think I included a copy, but let me see it here. This is the parcel, this is the repairing river here. It was divided into five lots, four of them were buildable lots. One was a lot that was right along the edge of the way that was going to have to be constructed. That way, by the way, was a fifty-foot way with a full-size cul-de-sac, which used up probably by half the lot. So that was approved. Each of the lots was about a third of an acre. And the lots were never sold off. The Phillips family just kept them. In two thousand and four, Silas Phillips then wanted to reconfigure these lots, so he submitted a request to the Harwich Planning Board for approval of a definitive subdivision plan to create two lots. The lots were shown here. This is the road, by the way, this is the river. And he was going to create a front lot with a panhandled lot to lead out to the back. Before they could vote on that, town council was, was called. They had a question about whether or not this was more appropriately an A and R plan, an approval-not-required plan, rather than a definitive subdivision plan. And the reason was that there was twenty feet of frontage on that panhandle back in nineteen, in two thousand and four. The planning board, although saying that they could give the waiver for the frontage, and I think because eighty-one R says you can, you can't. And so they thought the best way to go would be with an approval-not-required plan, and if you wanted to build on that lot, you'd have to come before this board to get relief from the insufficient frontage on the road. So there are two plans here. One was, one was a definitive subdivision plan. You can see it's not signed. The one below here is an A and R plan. It's the same plan, they just changed the notation on the top of it. It was signed and approved. Now, this is a property that is registered with the Massachusetts Land Court. Further plan work would have had to have been done in order to make this happen and to formalize the change. So that was never done. So what we're left with is either a subdivision plan with four lots or an A and R plan with two lots. In any case, along comes Mr. Blanchard and bought the property, did some research, did find some of the plans in the planning department, including this document from the Harwich Town Clerk, which basically said that the votes, the board voted to approve the endorsement of the plan with the reduced frontage for lot eleven, which was the panhandled lot. Isn't in the public interest and is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. And so Blanchard's purchased this property. As you indicated, and that's where we are today. The property is in the R L zoning district, which requires a minimum of forty thousand square feet. We need a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, twenty-five feet front setbacks and twenty-foot setbacks on the sides and the rear. And the Harwich Bylaw does allow for a reduction of the frontage on a panhandled lot to thirty-five feet. The, I'm just going to swap that off, hold on. If you can see that a little bit easier. The petitioner is seeking to reconfigure those last two lots or the initial four lots to comply with the current bulk requirements of the bylaw. This plan was brought before the Harwich Planning Board on October eighth of two thousand nineteen as a definitive subdivision plan, and that was approved on that date. But because the width of the panhandled lot, not, not the frontage, but the width right here, is only twenty-four feet instead of the required thirty-five feet, we do need a variance from this board, and that's why we are here today. When we're reconfiguring this lot, we had a lot of things that we had to juggle because we have minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. We had the frontage requirements. We have the shape factor, which is a newer form of compliance. And we had to deal with the panhandled lot. So moving lines on a computer is very easy, but to keep all three of those things in play was very difficult. We decided we wanted at least forty thousand square feet per lot. That's the current zoning requirement, that's what we thought was appropriate. That also would give us enough room for our septic, the houses, setbacks. We're also dealing with some significant setbacks from the river, from wetlands, which would deal, have to really, it would affect this property more than anything, but just a little bit. And so what we thought would be to at least try to comply with as many things as we possibly could, and the last thing that we could not comply with would be the width of the panhandled lot to thirty-five feet. So we're eleven feet shy there. If we had made that thirty-five feet, it would have thrown the lot coverage off, I mean, the, the shape factor off. And moving some of the lines around would have thrown the lot coverage off because we do have wetlands here as well, so we have to reduce that size down to the upland. So under Chapter three twenty-five, Section eighteen Q, the planning board can approve this for the lot frontage and lot width within a panhandle of thirty-five feet. The length of the panhandled portion would be a maximum of three hundred feet. Here we have a hundred and sixty-seven feet, so we meet that one. Suitable access by a driveway to such lot is provided within a panhandle, and in the opinion of the board, that's the planning board, the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. The panhandled lots must meet the shape number requirements of three twenty-five eighteen A, so that's the back lot. And no panhandled portion of any lot may be contiguous with another panhandled lot next to it, they don't want that. So under Section Q, we do meet sections, subsections two, three, four, and five, and also a portion of lot, of Section one with regard to the lot frontage of thirty-five feet. And it's just the width that we are seeking relief for tonight. The board can issue variances under forty-eight, Section ten. In this case, I think we meet the criteria for it. I think in, in this case, based on this lot, this is more of a size, I'm sorry, a shape requirement, not the size, because we do meet the forty thousand square feet on each of these lots. I think that it moves it away from size and into shape. The, the area near the, near the road is what is compressed, and that's the hard part. That, coupled with all of the wetlands on here, which reduce the size of that back lot down to close to forty thousand square feet, we have about forty-three thousand square, forty-three thousand square feet of upland. So I, I believe it really does have to do with shape in this camp, in, in this case, and also with the soil with regard to the wetlands. I think a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioners. In this case, they thought they were getting four, maybe two, probably two, less, less likely the four, and had these plans and thought that's what they were getting. This is a better plan than what was proposed back in two thousand and four, and I think this is the, the best and most compliant plan that we can have. If, if this is a, a lot that can only accommodate one house, it's going to be close to eighty-three thousand square feet of upland for a single-family home, which I don't think is really necessary when you look at the houses surrounding it, they're all smaller lots. And plus, this could have been on one-third of an acre for each of these lots, which is unnecessary. Desirable relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Here, we're trying to have two single-family homes. Both will be area compliant, plenty of room to meet those setbacks. The panhandle, in this case, is twenty-four feet where thirty-five is necessary. However, the panhandle is, is really a driveway. We got rid of a fifty-foot wide way and a cul-de-sac and went to twenty-four feet, which can easily accommodate a ten-to-twelve foot driveway in this case. In addition, it's possible that, because of all these lots, I think that the town would rather also see this be two lots rather than anything more than that. Plus, this is the residential low-density district, and I think that rather than four, I think the, just to stay in, in tune with the zoning requirements of the low-density district, that this would be a better plan for everyone. You do have in your packet, I think, a memo from a few of the boards, but one from the planning board, which really supports the plan. We hope that you agree. I think we have met the requirements for the variance in this case, and I think it's a, a small variance, minimus, as much as possible, and we hope that you would agree. If you have any questions, we hope we can answer those for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Attorney Tardif. Mr. Murphy?
The, this, this plan, I guess in ninety, seventy-four, it was the original one, the one that had five or four, whatever's buildable. Was that actually approved by the town? Or was that just submitted to the town?
To get to that point, it had to have been approved by the town. Yeah, because it goes from the town first, then to the land court for those plans.
Okay. And on the, on that panhandle, what, what it butts out to the, I guess, to the below, is that a, is that, it's already an existing house there?
It's an existing house there, correct.
Yeah.
Single-family house.
This is, this is the old Saltwater Lane, that's the, and then this is just a lot here with a single-family home right here.
How far will that, that drive be from that single-family home?
Probably roughly twenty-five feet, I would say, from the edge of the drive to the home.
Okay. All right, I don't have any question, any more questions?
Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Tardif, I have to confess that despite having driven there and looked around, I can't relate this to this. Could you explain to us where that space is on this plan?
Your question is, where is, so this is the lot here. This is the old Saltwater Lane.
Right, drove all through there.
That is right where the neck of the thirty-five feet is.
So we're talking about this?
Nope, it's here, it starts here, thirty-five feet here to the, the neck, and this is the remaining lot here.
Lanes, in different locations. There's a Saltwater Lane to the top, if you look at the map to the top, there's a Saltwater Lane.
This pin right here.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are like this.
Yes.
This matches with this.
Okay.
There's a split rail fence. Did you see that fencing?
And this is vacant space?
There's a, there's a home in here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's your plan.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hilliard?
Okay, I'm confused, you can unconfuse me.
Okay, I hope.
The plan, this land court plan, the seventy-four plan?
Yes.
That we're talking about. Is that a plan with the intent of having three, creating a subdivision with a cul-de-sac with three lots?
Four lots.
Four lots.
It's actually five lots, four of them buildable.
Okay. And that is no longer on the table?
Well, it is recorded with the land court, it's registered with the land court.
Approved by the planning, approved by the planning board?
Yes.
And the cul-de-sac has been approved and it has sufficient frontage?
Well, it, it would have fifty feet, yes, and it would be wide enough.
Yeah.
Yes. But, but it's possible that those lots have merged.
Single owner, they've merged?
Yeah, probably.
Sure. So getting back to this.
Yes.
This was just approved in two thousand nineteen, is that correct?
Correct.
Before two thousand nineteen, was this just one lot?
Well, it's a good question.
I say just one lot, what I mean is lots ten and eleven were one lot.
There, there's been no division of these lots? There's been no deeds out of these lots?
Okay.
It is sitting as one deed that the Blanchards took in their, their trust. Their deed actually references the four or the five lots on the sub, the land court plan.
The planning board approved this as a Form A plan, is that right? This, the newest, the two thousand nineteen?
Yes, that was recently.
As a Form A plan. And by doing that, without any notation on this, which is confusing me even more, without any notation that this is not a buildable lot, or this requires a variance from Board of Appeal, where are you looking?
Yeah, to upper-left corner.
Yeah.
A little footnote there?
Different regulation, lot frontage and lot width within shall be a minimum, there are variance of panhandled lot width to be required, thank you, I somehow just missed that, okay.
That's fine.
So they, they approved this, you come here and you say, now we need a variance, not necessarily from the thirty-five feet, but the twenty-four feet that it narrows down to.
Correct.
And you looked at this every way you can look at it, and you cannot figure out, we can get the twenty-four feet either out of lot ten or lot eleven?
If, if we move the twenty-four feet to thirty-five feet?
Yeah.
We will mess up the lot, the shape factor on these lots. If we do that, we move it back, we move the minimum lot size requirements for it.
But then you're looking for a variance from the minimum lot size as opposed to a variance from the frontage, I would.
Well, no, not frontage, just the panhandled width.
It is, right.
Right. And, and of the, of the three things, I think that, and I don't want to say insignificant. I think we wanted to keep the minimum lot size for these lots. That was primary.
Of course.
The shape factor is also significant because we wanted to make sure those met as well. And that left the panhandle size that we can only.
I haven't heard, just looking at the statute, I haven't heard the argument with respect to what constitutes the hardship, whether it's, you know, the land or the topography or the soil, or, because if this is a brand-new lot and you just created this lot, I'm sorry, these lots, and you created the requirement, the need for variances?
Well, we were modifying the other plan from two thousand and four, which had a twenty-foot wide panhandle at the road and all along up to the back.
Yep.
This would be a, this would be a financial hardship. They have purchased this property, at least relying on some of these plans, on that, on that last plan, of course, thinking this was two lots. Looked at the, the size of the lot, and the upland's over forty-three, eighty-three thousand square feet, so we can meet that requirement. So I don't think it's about size, it's about shape. I think that the fact that the lot is in conjunction with the river and all the wetlands that we have here, the, the lot as it meets Riverside Drive is just a bit too narrow, and I think that's the problem. If we had a few extra feet, we might be able to get that neck out to the thirty-five feet and play around the back, but we don't. And we don't have enough space in the back, even though it looks like it's a much bigger lot, because of the wetlands.
And Riverside LLC is not willing to give you any space or, is that the only space to go from twenty-four to thirty-five?
Frequently, we haven't talked to them, but I'm, I doubt.
My concern is, is I, I get the hardship issue. I mean, you've got a huge piece of land, and you, if you don't have, is the ability to get to this back lot?
We, well, we have the ability, I think, and I think that's the, the issue is.
You've got, you've got one lot, and that one lot is eighty-some odd thousand square feet.
Correct.
And some matter of, I guess, it's eleven feet is stopping you from...
Eleven feet by a hundred and thirty-two feet, yeah.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Yeah, it seems to me they do have a valid case for variance here. Because I think that the wetlands is what's sort of making the issue there, causing the problem, which is, of course, topography, soils conditions. And to me, there would be hundreds of thousands of dollars of hardship if they could only put one house on here. So I think they clearly meet the hardship requirement. And I think it is, it's due to the wetlands, so I feel a variance in this case would be justified if they met their statutory requirements.
Looking at this, I agree.
And the, I don't know, we don't need to get into it, but I'm not sure that seventy-four lots and this, if you wanted to proceed, I don't think you could get a variance for four lots.
I think the building commissioner might have something to say about that.
Well, I don't think the board would grant a variance. I mean, I don't think that could be justified, but I think this can be justified under the statute. Mr. Donahue?
When I was up there, that, coming in off of Riverside, there's a small pathway or a small road with branches of bushes kind of off the side. Is that where the axis is going to be to this property?
On the right side, yes, yes, sir.
It's close.
Correct, it's close. It's going to be a bit closer to that fence, that split-reel fence.
All right. I have no further questions.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
No questions?
No.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Donahue. Oh, wait, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Discussion by the board on the application.
It seems reasonable to me, the, I mean, it's, originally had four lots or four buildable lots, and now we're going to two in seventy-four, and they're...
Yeah, I think they're hemmed in by the wetlands. I think that justifies, together with the financial impact, which would be significant. I think they meet the hardship requirement.
Twenty-five feet ample for emergency vehicles to get through to the second, okay?
Yes. They usually need, what they ask for usually is thirteen feet by thirteen feet. Thirteen feet wide, thirteen feet high, that can get the doors open.
Any further discussion by the board? No?
No, I'm in favor of having this...
I'll entertain a motion in case two thousand and twenty dash zero-one, please.
That the board approved, the, I'm sorry, the board approved...
Wait, let me stop you one second. We will need the construction condition on this one, definitely.
Will we on Riverside?
Oh, are you kidding? That road, yeah.
It lives around the corner.
Well, that's for sure.
Timothy Blanchard, Carrie Blanchard, we approve through their agent, attorney Paul Tardif, a variance to allow for twenty-four-foot-wide newly-created panhandle lot with thirty-five feet is required. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section three twenty-five dash eighteen-Q, as set forth in Mass. Turnover Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Property located at, we're going to have a problem with this because we have three addresses. And I don't know how that's going to work on your title, but I'll put it out there as you bask for it. Located at three Saltwater Lane, also known as fourteen Saltwater Lane, also known as one twenty-three Riverside Drive. And if I may editorially comment on that, I don't think you can have a road that isn't on an accepted or at least approved by the town that the post office is going to want delivery on Riverside Drive. Map, four apostles, A1 through A5, A6, A7, and A8, and A9 in the MRL zoning district. The limitation... Because the property is in a close residential location, there can be no substantial demolition, external construction, or no substantial landscaping in any year during the period thirty June through Labor Day.
Can I have a second on the motion, please? Second, Mr. Capoli. Any discussion on the motion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? variance granted.
Good job.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Want these?
Yes, sure, sure, thank you.
Sounds confusing as heck to drive over there, pick around.
Wait a minute, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take the five-minute resets, and then we will reconvene. Yeah, this one I've got marked.
Take one of the handles you want. Thank you very much.
You made a comment about Riverside LLC.
Reconvene, we're back on the record. Paper's rolling. We call our next case, please.
Case number two twenty dash zero-two. The Royal Apartments LLC, its agent, Alex Burton, has applied for a variance to convert the use of the property from inert home assisted living use to multifamily dwelling residential use. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section three twenty-five dash fifty-two, Table one, Use Regulations as Set For in Mass. Turnover Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Property is located at three twenty-eight Bang Street, Map forty-one, Apostle N four, in the MRL zoning district. We have some comments from the town boards which are on file if anyone wishes to see them.
Okay, we'll have voting on this case. Let's see, Ms. Mueller, Mr. Hilliard, me, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. And if you could introduce yourselves, sir, and present your petition, please.
I'm happy to. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Zender, and I'm an attorney in Orleans, and I'm here on behalf of Royal Apartments LLC. This is an application for a variance from the requirement that a multifamily dwelling project in the MRL zoning district, in your area tables, you have minimal requirements for land area of ten thousand square, I'm sorry, ten acres. And there's also a density limitation of eight units per acre. This project is actually a reconfiguration of an existing property over on Parallel Street that you may be familiar with, it's the Winstead or Royal Apartments. It's a forty-three-unit assisted living facility that was recently sold. And Royal Apartments would like to construct a multifamily dwelling there, keeping the apartment building, or keeping the building in the same configuration with some changes to the parking lot, the parking lot layout and the curb cuts, which I have with me, just in case you have any questions that I can't answer, which will be most of your questions, is Dave McNeves from Coastal Engineering is our site engineer, and Matt Nelson behind him is the architect, and Alex Barden is technically the applicant and the agent representative for this.
Thank you.
So, we went through the first round of site plan review and a special permit granting hearing with the planning board last night. They took testimony, they kept the hearing open, we're going back in February eleventh. They wanted to see one change to the site plan, and that change was the location of the dumpster was against the lower door on the side of the building, and the fire marshal came to the meeting and suggested that that wasn't an appropriate location for a dumpster, which I thought was an appropriate comment to be made. And so the engineers are, I think they've already identified a new location for the dumpster, but we're going to submit to the planning board a new site plan showing that changed dumpster location. To the best of my memory, I don't think there were any other changes to the site plan that were requested by the planning board. But the planning board also indicated that they do want to see what this board does with regard to considerations of the variance required. So, to meet a variance, it's a hard standard to meet. And as you know, because you just granted one a few minutes ago, we have to demonstrate that the petitioner is going to suffer substantial hardship, and that hardship has to be owing to or related to either a saw condition, a topographical condition, or a shape factor, I'm sorry, let's forget that. And we have to show that relief can be granted without substantial derogation from the spirit of the intent of the bylaw or harm to the public good. It's an interesting property. What's being proposed here in this district is what this district was created for, which was to create multifamily dwelling use in the town. There's a need for this type of activity. This proposal is for rental, market-rate rental housing. It's not anticipated that the units would be condominiumized or sold. The breakdown here is twenty-six units, of which five will be studio, small studio units, which are a need. Fourteen will be one-bedroom units. They won't be restricted to elderly use or disabled use, they're open-market units. And seven will be two-bedroom units. And so these are not large units. It's anticipated they will rent at good competitive market rates. And then the use of the building won't change, other than that use. The site itself is located in the MRL district, and this was last minute for me, so I apologize for this, but I'm going to just go to each end of the table and hopefully you can just pass these along. I made a photocopy of the zoning map for the Town of Howard. MRL zoning district is relatively small. It's a relatively small zoning district, and interestingly, and I'll leave a copy with the file when I go.
No worries.
Okay? Interestingly, what I've sketched into there, that blue circle in the middle, is Grassy Pond. So if you look at the MRL district, it's a relatively small district, but it looks to me that roughly half of it is unusable by reason of Grassy Pond, kind of eating up the middle of this area. So I then went one further step, and I pulled up your GIS maps, which are wonderful, by the way. And I began to look for lots of ten acres or more in the MRL zoning district. There are two of them. That's it, there are two lots. And one is the Country Meadows Condominiums, which I think is roughly, is somewhat over sixty units. And the other is Pine Oaks One on, I forget the name, John, I think it's Hopkins Road, but I always get that wrong.
John Nelson.
Thank you. I'm a wealthy person, I always get roads wrong in the other towns. They're both developed for multifamily housing. And, you know, one, Pine Oaks is a wonderful, I was in there recently, it's a wonderful, wonderful facility, but it serves elderly and disabled persons. Country Meadows is privately-owned condominiums. This would create the only market-rate rental units, which would be available for workforce housing, younger people, younger families, lower-income families at a market rate, at no cost to the town. Absolutely no cost to the town or increase the tax base. And most importantly, it would allow this particular site and this structure, which is no longer an assisted living facility and will not be, and probably wouldn't be because of the economics of it, to be reutilized for market-rate housing. To not be able to use this large structure for this use would be a significant hardship for the applicant because the site doesn't lend itself with this structure to other uses other than residential uses. And this is a use that would provide for, you know, walking-distance central-area housing. The location of Grassy Pond in this zoning district literally eats up this district. It takes away any ability to develop any part of this district within that entire central area. That's certainly topographical consideration, a topographical feature. It affects this property, it affects the entire... It affects this property, it affects the entire zoning district, but not the town as a whole, and we believe that this variance would certainly, not only not derogate from the public, from the intent of the bylaw, which is to provide housing, and more dense housing for the citizens of your town, but it would actually further that. I have not gone into the details of the construction itself, of the site. If the board has questions, Dave can answer them, and Matt can answer those for you, but what I really feel is that this application for you is not a site plan review application, it really has to do with whether or not the variance can be granted for the use of this property in this way, and we hope that you will see if it's granted, the variance. I'm keeping my remarks a little short, given the hour. I could argue longer, but I think you already know the site before I even get up to the table, so I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and thank you.
Very, thank you. Mr. Murphy.
On the plan itself, the proposed plan, you're going to remove an existing, looks like a septic or the grass over the septic system, make that into parking?
Yes.
And that'll have a drain to capture runoff, is that right?
Yeah, Dave can answer this. The entire site has been engineered for stormwater, for stormwater retention, and Dave, do you mind just coming to a microphone and explaining the stormwater and the drainage systems for the board? You have to be here, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
And identify yourself.
David McNeves, Coastal Engineering Company. The board on the right shows the existing site conditions, and so, it's got the upper parking lot between the main building and the smaller building on the west side, and the parking lot behind the small building, grade drops off to walkout level. And really, for that parking lot, there really isn't much, there's really no stormwater drainage systems currently, just sheet flows off that lower parking lot, and then goes across land and soaks in, and before it gets to the wetland. I'm going to call up the other board with the site plan, or actually, we can, no, that doesn't show the drainage.
And this would be sheets, C 2.1.1 in your package, copies of the plans.
So, I think your question directly was, what about the stormwater drainage control?
Basically, yeah.
The new parking lot has a catch basin down in the southeast corner of that. That will collect all of the runoff from the new pavement, and it will be directed to a subsurface leaching facility between the east end of that parking lot and, I would say, the generator that's going over in that location. So, that is, that's the drainage system for the new parking. And then, the upper parking lot is going to have a drainage system installed in that. There's a trench drain that's going to cross the driveway, just where the grade begins to fall down from that upper parking lot, coming down. That will collect all of the runoff from that upper parking lot, and there'll be a subsurface leaching facility under that upper parking lot for that. And then, the existing parking lot will continue to shed off, and we've talked about that with the town engineer, and he understands what's going on where.
The one in the, that's the southwest?
That's the southwest parking lot, that's correct.
Anything further?
Yeah, it is, right now, the current, well, not now, but the previous occupants, what were the number of people in there, and what's the new occupancy level?
The previous was 40, I believe it was 43 rooms, or that was the sizing of the septic system?
Yeah.
Yeah, the previous design flow was 43 bedrooms.
No, that's the proposed. So, the septic system had a design flow, has an approved design capacity of 4,773 gallons per day. That was based on the use and, you know, the facility use, the nursing home or assisted living use, and the number of rooms. And then, what is proposed is 43 bedrooms at 110 gallons a day, which is just slightly less than what the approved and designed capacity of the septic system is.
But as far, you said there was, is that, so you're saying that there's approximately the same number of bedrooms or, I guess, bedrooms in the?
The flow factor is a little different. The room, number of rooms might have been slightly less. I don't have the existing conditions floor plan.
Okay.
But that type of use has a higher flow factor. A residence has a factor of 110 gallons per day, per bedroom. That assisted living or nursing home use has, well, assisted living, 150 gallons per day per bed.
No more questions. Ms. Mueller.
Yes, I have several questions. I want to confirm my understanding that the allowed density is eight bedrooms per acre, and what you are proposing is 18 bedrooms per acre, is that correct?
It's eight units per acre is the allowed density.
And you're proposing?
We're proposing 26 units over 1.9 acres.
There was a comparison in here somewhere of the number of bedrooms. Okay, oh, yes, here. Applicant requests allowance, a density of 18 bedrooms per acre.
18 bedrooms per acre.
18 bedrooms per acre, yes. Whereas, the maximum density in the bylaw is eight bedrooms per acre.
I believe that's units, but one.
This was a Mass. General Law 40A. Royal Apartments requests a variance from the bylaw minimum of a 10-acre lot area and maximum density of eight bedrooms per acre.
That's the variance request, you're right.
Okay. You mentioned Country Meadows. Can you tell us what the density is at Country Meadows?
I tried to find that out, and I went through the assessing records, and unfortunately, the assessing records don't list the acreage for Country Meadows, because it's condominium form of ownership.
How about at Pine Oaks?
Pine Oaks, I don't know what the number of bedrooms are.
How about 718 Main Street?
That I don't know.
Okay. So, you're asking for a variance of 18 bedrooms per acre versus eight allowed, and if my math is correct, that's 2.25 times the, what the law calls for, the zoning.
I'll have to trust you on the math, but that sounds about it.
Yeah, okay, okay. The units, I've had occasion to, because my mother is 98, I've had occasion to visit some senior living facilities in the last couple of years. I know three of the units are designated as studios of 275 square feet.
Yes.
They are exactly what you see when you choose an assisted living unit that has a bed, kind of a partial kitchen and a bathroom.
Yes.
Are you aware that the average studio in the U.S. is 500 to 600 square feet, whereas you're proposing something like four units of 270 square feet?
Yeah, we're proposing the smaller units.
275.
First of all, I'm not aware what the national average is for studios, I'm not sure how that's calculated, but I'll trust you on that. I'll accept your numbers on that.
Wikipedia, it's right there, okay.
Yeah, whatever it is. But, you know, we don't have to build studio units, we're trying to keep some units that are more affordable for single people that come in, that want something smaller for lower rents. You know, if the board feels that this, and those do meet the requirements under both building code and local code for the minimum size for habitation, so, but we're certainly willing to.
They're tiny.
They are tiny, but.
You could have a double bed and maybe a couple.
But there are people, there are people that want that, and there are people that want to pay lower rents. We could certainly, if the board feels that they want to see more large, I mean, fewer larger units, we can do that. It's just, just from a marketing perspective, there are people that want these studio units, and so, some people just want a place to come in and sleep and, you know, watch TV and have their meals.
Okay. Again, you mentioned Pine Oaks.
I did.
Their one-bedroom units are 735 square feet, according to what I could find online. Your one-bedroom units range from 435 to 575 square feet. So, again, very small units.
Small units, they are.
Okay. How do you propose to enforce a maximum number of people per unit based on the unit size?
Through lease, lease contracts will require that.
And how will that be enforced? Who will, what is to stop somebody from renting a one-bedroom unit of 500 square feet and having two people in the bedroom and two people sleeping in the living room?
Like any residents in this town, there's really no enforcement mechanism for people overcrowding properties, but, you know, the lease will provide a maximum number of people. If people violate the lease, they're subject to eviction.
And what's the maximum number of people that you would anticipate would be living in these units?
We assume that the, we make an assumption, that we make the same assumption that the state makes, which is that a one-bedroom unit can support two people, two people per bedroom, is what we assume, it's the same thing that Title V assumes and the town assumes.
Okay, all right.
As with a assisted living facility, you know, two people can live in one room.
Okay, and then, I wonder, are you aware of this recent article in the Chronicle that the building at the other end of the street is being proposed for affordable housing?
I am not aware of that article in the Chronicle.
Okay, that was from the Cape Cod Chronicle, it's January 23rd, might be of some interest. Are you aware that at the current time, there's a big move underfoot, two, big projects underfoot, to one block over, improve Main Street of Harwich Center?
I am not aware of that either. I apparently didn't do enough homework for that, I apologize, but I'm not sure what the relevance of that is for this project.
I think there's a possibility here that while we're trying to upgrade Harwich Center, Main Street and Harwich Center, we would be creating a situation in this building at Parallel Street and Bank Street that could be an overcrowding of situation, that would not be supportive of an improvement in Harwich Center.
Well, I think you can look at that two ways. Look, small units are less expensive, they provide workforce housing, they provide housing for young people, they provide housing for single people, for older single people. There's a need for this housing, and the need for this housing, this is not a design by the company to come in and create slum housing. This is, this is a desire to take the existing property with an existing septic flow and existing sized building, and convert it to units that are usable by the citizens of Harwich.
Okay, and I noticed in your narrative, you talked about doing the least repurposing and business feasibility. Did you give any consideration to changing the dimensions of units within that building, to reallocating the space within that building to have fewer units?
Yes.
So, that, for instance, you wouldn't have a 275-square-foot unit.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Alex Barden to speak to this, because he's, he is the representative developer who made the business decisions on how to repurpose this building and how to use this space, so if Alex, do you mind?
Alex Barden here for Newman Properties and Royal Apartments LLC. We bought this property September 1st of 2019, and we studied the property and looked at the way it is currently configured. Currently, there's a bunch of studio-esque apartments in the, in the structure, used for assisted living. Our intent was to utilize as much of the existing structure as possible to maximize what we could do. The only thing that we're really taking away is there's a current kitchen, a big kitchen that we're going to turn into units, and other than that, we're taking two units, two studios that sit next to each other, opening them up, living room, bedroom, and making it into one beds. So, we worked within the existing structure and what the building lent to us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more thing, I'm sorry to cut you off. We also met with the town officials ahead of time. Originally, we were not talking about doing two bedrooms, because they compromised, they didn't really lay out the way we wanted to. As we met with the officials, they said we really need two-bedroom housing here, and we've reorganized a couple of things to get more, more two beds into the site plan.
I'd see seven of the units would be two-bedroom units, and your plans noted that they would be ranging in size from 660 to 1,000. There's one that's 1,030 square feet, and for two, there was no indication of what the size would be.
I don't know which two offhand, but probably right within that range.
I think they were in the accessory building.
Okay, probably right within that range.
Okay. Okay, no more questions at this time.
Hilliard.
Thank you. So, you currently, you're proposing 26 units, 33 bedrooms, is that correct?
Yes.
How many bedrooms currently exist, if you know?
When we bought this property, it was no longer running as a assisted living facility.
How many, do you know how many beds are in there?
Currently, there's none.
How many beds were they licensed to have, if you know?
I believe it was 35 bedrooms, but I'm not certain about that. I can certainly get that for the next meeting.
You believe it was 35 bedrooms?
I believe it was, but I can get that for the board for the next meeting.
I'm only asking, I want to look at what the difference is going to be, if you go forward versus what it is now.
Right.
Okay. Are you going to make a change in the square footage of the building that will inhabit people for purposes of apartments? You're going to expand the size of the building?
No. You're talking, you're asking from an exterior standpoint? The answer is no.
Okay, so it stays the same. Limitations on rental, excuse me, will people be able to rent by the week, by the month, by the year, any limitations?
We only, excuse me, we only do annual rentals. One-year leases, in some situations, we grant two-year leases if someone's here on a work contract.
At a minimum, it would be a year.
Correct.
So, it's not the a tringe, I want to rent for a week or a month or?
No, no short-term rentals.
I heard the word low income, which is, is it intended to be low income, either by definition of your definition or by definition of the state, or what do you?
We plan on bringing market rate housing to Harwich Center. Our one, our studios, we're allocating $1,010 for the studios, our one-bedrooms are 1,300 to 1,500, and our two-bedrooms, we're still waiting to see where that market will come in. These are for the people who cook the food, who work in the town, the firemen. We own buildings in Dennis, we own buildings in Hyannis, we own buildings further out of the Cape that we have people commuting further down that are begging for housing here.
If you know now, what do you anticipate the total cost of renovations to bring it up to rentable space?
We haven't gotten that far in our construction drawings at this point, because obviously we're asking for relief from you, and before I allocate those funds to develop those plans, I anticipate this probably being a million and a half to $2 million minimum, on top of our initial investment to purchase.
In the architecture, doesn't change?
On the exterior of these buildings, we are not changing anything.
Okay. So, tell me about the conditions of the variance again. What are you suggesting that it meets the statutory requirement of soil conditions, topography?
The hardship, as I explained earlier, is the, is that this structure on this site lends itself to residential use, it lends itself to disuse or an assisted living facility use, both uses, by the way, which are special permitted uses, you know, within the district. The, the lack of area for this, there's really no ability to find a lot in this district that meets this requirement. It just, it doesn't exist, and it doesn't exist by reason of, I would argue, by reason of the fact that it looks to me that roughly half of this lot, half of this zoning is taken up by Grassy Pond. It's just, the town appears to want multi-family housing in this district, but sets, I think, an unreasonably high limitation on how you can do it, in terms of, you know, a 10-acre lot anywhere in the town is difficult to find, but in this district, it only exists in two places that I can see, and as I told you before.
So, but for the name, we're calling it Apartments versus?
Assisted living.
Yeah, assisted living or independent living, it's the same, almost the same number of bedrooms?
Well, additionally, one thing, one thing that the board needs to be aware of, assisted living, the use is, I believe, is more intense, because the people that live in assisted living have people coming in to take care of them, professionals come in to care for them, there are visitors coming to visit them, there's, there's more activity with assisted living than there is with, with a residential apartment, more so, for example, than, you know, transit lodging, where people don't know where they're going, they're coming in, they're coming and going, seasonal lodging, you know, people are changing every week, they're having to learn about the, about the neighborhood. Disuse, you know, when people come in and they rent on an annual basis, they know where they're going, they generally leave to go to work during the day, they come home at night, hopefully, there's not too many parties on the weekends, and I don't, can't imagine there would be. It's essentially the same residential occupancy of the property, it's just that people are carrying. It's just that people are caring for themselves versus being cared for by others in slightly different ways. But in terms of, you know, the traffic impacts in the neighborhood, they're essentially the same. I would argue they're essentially the same because of, you know, assisted living people own cars. They have cars, their visitors have cars, their professionals have cars. And, and the people that will occupy these have cars. So, my feeling, and this is just my opinion, and I, I don't get a vote, is that from the exterior observation by the people in the town, they're driving by and looking at this property, whether they see it as an assisted living facility or whether they see it as multifamily. It's gonna look the same with some improvements to, um, to the, to the site, and it's gonna sound the same and it's gonna feel the same.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure, I've heard the right words yet to get us to a variance. A lot of what you're talking about are issues to go to the selectmen to change the zoning and the planning board, change the zoning code.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's one comment. The other comment for the board is, I, I think we should get a traffic study before we move on this because we are going from, and notwithstanding what we just said, my attorney's ender, I think the, the fact that we're gonna put twenty-six apartments in there with a lot of vehicles, I think there's gonna be a lot more traffic than people having some caregivers in and out in assisted living. And I think it would, in this neighborhood, behooves to have them come back with a traffic study. That's one thing. I'm gonna pass these out as the basis for my discussion, and I'm gonna give you folks one. And I'm not saying I'm voting in favor of this, but if I were to be persuaded, I would wanna see these conditions in any variance. My two biggest concerns are lighting, and I think that's covered by Article twenty-one. You're, you've gotta comply with it anyway. And I think the town has done a pretty good job on the lighting requirements and the requirements to keep lighting, you know, in your premises, not off the premises. So, you're gonna have to require that anyway. I believe you're gonna have to amend Plan SP two, though, to show that. I don't think it currently complies, although I'm not a lighting expert. Just looking at it doesn't get me there. But my even bigger concern is number two is parking. I think parking is a major issue. I know you're proposing forty-one parking spots, but people are gonna have visitors, and I would wanna see a restriction in the lease and any deed if you subsequently sell it, such as the one here, that the tenants cannot park on Bank Street or Pleasant Street and not in the library parking lots unless they're using the library, and not their guests either. Neither you folks enforce it at your expense, or the town would have the option to enforce it at your expense or the tenant's expense, so we've got some teeth in it. The library, during the summertime, it doesn't have much parking anyway, and that's, of course, the visiting season, so I think you're...
Sometimes in the wintertime.
Well, it's some days, you have to have in a program. And I think that that would be a source of a lot of angst in the neighborhood. So, I think that's absolutely a requirement. We would have to have three as standard. The Conservation Commission has a, a number of notes that we would want to make compliance with them, conditions. And last would be, as you said, leases of a minimum of one year. I, I forgot that when I was typing this up, but I think Mr. Hilliard's point is well-taken. You know, we don't want Airbnb rentals, and you probably need to prohibit that in your leases to subleasing. So, anyway, I'm still not convinced what we would need, I think, at a minimum, these kinds of conditions. Do you folks have any problem with these? Can you live with them?
Yeah, I have, I have no issue. I, I welcome all of these. I think they're great suggestions.
I, I don't think they're unreasonable.
No, no. Not, not at all.
Because we do have an obligation to protect the neighborhood. You know, if you were forty-B, different story, but you're not. I'd love to, if it were forty-B, because then we would have affordable housing. And you're, you're doing market-rate housing, which, yeah, I guess we need it depending on what the rate is. You know?
There's small A affordable, and there's large A affordable, and I think, I think the town needs both.
And our, our price threshold is actually, I think, beneath what the affordable threshold is.
I mean, all I read about is that the rentals are not affordable in Harwich, Chatham, you know, Brewster, wherever, so... But, you know, you, you're gonna be the judges of that, but Mr. Donahue?
This, uh, there's gonna be contingencies made in the language of the lease that the lessor will not be have the ability to sublet an apartment.
In all of our leases, and the principal of this company owns, I think, currently over seven-hundred-and-fifty units. In every lease, there is no subletting without prior written consent of the landlord, and they have to go through the same application process for that consent as any of the original applicants.
Following up with the chairman's questions with regard to parking, that's a big issue. That's a very big issue in this community. And there has to be sufficient parking that you're gonna have to figure out where these tenants are going to park, because responsibility's gonna wind up in you. And as you stated, the library is not going to be public parking. And you said, I think it, I think I read it had, what, thirty-eight parking spaces currently? It will be forty-one?
Forty-one.
It, it, it currently is less than thirty-eight.
Less than thirty-eight right now?
It's significantly less. I don't know the number offhand, but we are adding, the, the bylaw calls for one and a half per unit, and we are two over the bylaw. We fit as many as we could while still not hitting any other zoning requirements. We didn't push back into setbacks further than we could or...
Right, but the bylaw also says eight bedrooms per acre.
So, that's what we are here for.
That's, you know, let's be careful on the forty-one spaces. Yes, I see that, but we've got twenty-six units going in here. And I, I have, to me, that's the biggest concern there is parking.
Yes.
I think lighting is covered under the, the bylaw. I'm not too worried about that, but I'm sorry, Mr. Donahue.
Is it gonna be an onsite manager?
There will not be an onsite manager.
No onsite manager?
We do not have a manager's unit. A, a project of this size does not call for it, for a superintendent or onsite manager. We're profi, I'm sorry, we're a professional management company with twenty-four-hour response that owns units all over the state.
Okay, so you do have the ability to respond to anything that might...
There was an issue from the fire department on Christmas Eve. The phone rang, we responded and handled it immediately. Correct.
Now, with regard to the upkeep of the property itself, are you planning on putting any kind of, um, as you know, in the rear, you've got basically Matt Grassy Pond in it, so not exactly the most appealing-looking thing right now. Are you gonna be able to put, so to be consistent with the surrounding neighbors, because I know that there are some concerns, certainly, putting plants of some nature in, bushes to protect the view of that property?
We're proposing, and, and we've submitted landscape plans as part of the application. We don't wanna get to the description. They're proposing, uh, the, um, the architect had prepared a landscape plan dated December sixth, and they're proposing six new eight-foot arborvitae's at the northwest and northeastly corners, three new six-foot Alberta spruce trees at the northeastly corner, two clusters of spruce arborvitae trees at the redesigned vehicular entrances, and then there already is screening to the south, southwest, and the southeast, down towards the wetland. It's all natural, and we're gonna retain those natural features as well.
So, it's fair to say the historic portion of this building, which faces Bank Street, that's gonna be compliant with the historic district in which it sits?
We have no exterior alterations planned. We will ma, we will handle...
It will be maintained.
We will handle the deferred maintenance and bring it up to its beautiful...
I have, okay, I have no further questions.
Mr. Armstrong.
Currently, we have an empty building and a need for housing. And in my opinion, it's not gonna change the look of the building. It's gonna provide a service, so I think it's, I think it's a good idea with some caveats.
Mr. Capoli.
A few questions, counsel.
Sure, please.
I know several people have mentioned it before, but I, I have to get back to the parking. I'm a lawyer, too, so math is not my strong point. I'm trying here real hard, but the, the regulation is, is, gets you to thirty-nine parking spots, but if, if you're gonna be having thirty-three bedrooms, you can assume you'll have up to sixty-six people. These days, most people have their own cars. I just, I've, I haven't seen anything in the presentation, your presentation, that addresses parking. Where would you expect people to park if, if there was overflow from, from your units? They can't park at the library.
So, similar to what Witchmere Harbor said when they were up here today, not all the units are occupied at all the same times. People work on different schedules. People travel on different schedules. People go to dinner on different schedules. Each unit will be assigned parking, and we do have some extra spaces, okay? At one per unit, that's twenty-six spaces. And let's say a single mother with a child, that's a two-bedroom unit. They don't have two cars. We, we need to self-manage this. That is the parking that we are proposing currently, and obviously, you guys are very concerned with parking, and are gonna be watching this project very closely from where you sit quarter of a mile away or less. We expect to be patrolling and controlling this.
You know, if there's only thirty-three people, or if there's only thirty-three cars, that's, that's the best-case scenario, but I'm, I'm asking from a, a worst-case scenario. Say, you've got the sixty-six cars. The question was, where are those people going to park? I want a location. But where, I need you to tell me where they're gonna park.
We, look, we designed it, we designed the code. We thought that was appropriate. You know, we're not looking for a variance from that requirement. If you want us to go back and look and try to identify a space to put more parking on the property, we'll do that. We, 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 we're not gonna come in here and say, "I, we expect people to park at somebody else's property." We, I don't think that's appropriate, so, but we can certainly look at the parking, and, and I think the board's telling us loud and clear to look at the parking.
Second question is, what is the, the, the size? I heard two companies, Newman Properties and Royal Apartments LLC?
Royal Apartments LLC was a sole-purpose entity established to hold this property. The principal of it, or the, uh, the owner of that is Matt Newman of Newman Properties. Newman Properties is a Brookline-based real estate company that owns units all the way down Route Three as close to here as Dennis.
And...
And Matt is also a Harwich resident?
Oh, yes, and Matt is a resident of Harwich Port, and I grew up in Summeran in Harwich and at the Brooks Library and other things. We have strong ties here.
And, and how many properties does the, the company own?
The number fluctuates. I'm gonna say units, not properties, roughly about seven-hundred-and-fifty currently.
And all over the state?
They recently acquired something in Salem as recently as last week. That's as far north. A, a lot of stuff inside the city limits of Boston, East Boston, South Boston, Plymouth Bourne, Dennis, uh, I'm sorry, I could keep go, yes.
But, but the company's headquartered in, in Brookline?
Correct. We do have South Shore, South Shore Management, property manager, angels, this entire area lives in Abington, and then we're, we're, we want to bring someone on for our Cape Cod management as our portfolio continues to grow on the Cape.
But currently, nothing's on the Cape as far as management?
As far as someone who currently lives on the, we have leasing coordinators who live down here, but as, in terms of management, no. We do have our professionals such as plumbers, electricians, handymen, all stationed everywhere.
Chairman brought up exterior lighting. I, I drive by there every day, and I was there to check out the property both during the daytime and during the evening. And, I mean, you have to comply with the, the regulations on, on exterior lighting, but I know as an attorney who dabbled in different types of cases, you know, personal injury, et cetera, you know, the property owners have a, a pretty high standard in Massachusetts to keep their property safe, and being well-lit is one of those requirements. So, I am wondering how you've addressed this issue to both make sure that your residents are safe or any visitor to the property is safe with adequate lighting, at the same time complying with the pretty strict outdoor lighting requirements?
Well, we've created a parking lot lighting plan. It's dated September twenty-fourth, submitted to SP two. I, I'm not a lighting engineer. I'm assuming that that lighting plan has been designed, it's been reviewed by the, by the, by the town planning department. I assume it's been designed to meet the onsite lighting requirements, meaning you don't have any exterior lighting. It's incumbent on the property owner to make sure they don't generate any lawsuits. Their carriers are gonna make sure that the parking lots are lit, so...
Okay, just, I mean, having been there in the day and the night, I, again, not being a, a lighting expert, but I struggle to see how you're gonna do that without really negatively impacting the entire neighborhood.
I think Article twenty-one covers that.
It does, but I'm just saying...
If you look at it, it covers the main lighting, but it also covers the safety lighting.
What I'm saying is, I struggle to see how they're going to make the property safe without affecting the neighbors.
Well, I think that's what Article twenty-one does, and we're gonna make that a condition, which means we can shut them down if they don't do it, so, because it'll be a condition of a special permit, not just Article twenty-one.
And then another question is about sewerage, septic. Did you get some feedback from Conservation on that or Health?
They didn't address this. I, I don't...
Job all around. It's, uh, the, the sewerage disposal system is not a conservation issue. It's, if it meets the required setbacks from the wetlands that the Board of Health and the state require, then there is a presumption under the Wetlands Protection Act and the town regulations that it is not a source of pollution, which, which the system does meet those requirements. The Board of Health has issued a comment that they would like a inspection of the sewerage disposal system, septic system inspection prior to issuing a permit for the, for the project, so...
But in different ways, all of this activity is outside the hundred-foot jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Because Grassy Pond is a particularly sensitive area. It's an important ecosystem.
It is.
So, I'm just wondering if you've taken into consideration the fact that you're going to be putting a little bit more strain on the septic system than...
They're not putting more strain on the system. It's actually a little less flow.
Is it an elderly?
Oh, it is.
Oh, come on.
Okay, um, next question. Has the, the company considered adding or creating some of the units as affordable? I know that they're, they're talking about market rate and little A and big A, but has the company, uh, thought about that? To be a good corporate citizen, the...
I'm trying not to be argumentative here. Look, the town needs market-rate housing. You need these units. You need affordable housing as well. They could come in and do a forty-B. They could push this density way up. They could get waivers from all of this, and, and trust me, the rents that people will be paying for those affordable units would not be significantly different than what is anticipated here. It's just that's what the numbers, that's how the numbers bear out. The cost of construction, the cost of ownership dictate that you have to get a return on your investment. So, if they can put a studio unit out there at eleven-hundred dollars a month, people will be lining up to rent those units. I, I, I have an apartment building in Orleans. I have apartments that I rent, trust me. People are, I, I get calls every day at that price point for people wanting to rent. So, no, these are market-rate units. They're small A affordable. This is not an affordable housing project. The town isn't paying any money to build it. They're not in, you know, all they're getting, if the permits are granted, they're getting the benefit of the additional housing stock that others have to live in. But, and, and again, I, I'm taking the issue. These are small A affordable, but they're affordable units. These are not, you know, twelve-hundred-square-foot, fifteen-hundred-square-foot luxury apartments like you see people converting in other towns, Chatham, for example. This is not that. And, you know, I would urge you all between now and the next minute to go on and look at Newman Properties. Look at their properties. Look at their portfolios. They're not slum lords. That's not what they do. They, they, they find appropriate properties, they redevelop them, they rent them at market rates, and they provide a, just a needed, a needed at the end. And I'm hoping that there are people here from, from the various boards in the town that can speak to that as well. Pine Oaks, needed, very well-run. It provides a service to, to the elderly and the disabled. You know, the condos provide a great housing resource for people for a little less than a single-family home if that's where you wanna live. if that's where you want to live. But, you know, I'm struggling to find projects like this in your town, or in surrounding towns. And you're not going to get to that, to address that affordable housing problem that you have without some increased density. Single-family construction is not going to do it in this town, or any of these towns. Land is too expensive. So the answer is, that's my long-winded no.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else?
No further.
Okay, I guess the only we post to that would be, yeah, but that doesn't necessarily mean you need twenty-six apartments approved by the board. Economics, I don't know. But, anyway, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Attorney David Reed. I represent the immediate abudders.
Put the mic up a little bit, Attorney, please, thanks.
The abudders at 109 Parallel Street are David Plunkett and Gregory Winston. That's their residence, and they are the owners of that property. They also happen to be the former owners of this property. And I can address some of your questions that you asked earlier. The prior use, as an assisted living facility, had twenty-six guest rooms, patient rooms, guest rooms, whatever you want to call them. There was also an owner's apartment on the third floor. There were not thirty or forty bedrooms, as was postulated earlier. There were twenty-six guest rooms, patient rooms, and one bedroom manager's or owner's apartment on the third floor. What's currently proposed, as you've discussed, is twenty-six units with a total of thirty-three bedrooms. Interestingly, the building to the right, as you face it from Parallel, number 111 Parallel Street, the smaller building on the plan, was never a residential building before, at least not during my client's use and ownership. It was at various times an antique shop, it was a garage, it was an activities area, but it was never a residential property. It's now proposed to contain units of this proposed multifamily dwelling use. We would also disagree with the suggestion that the prior use and the proposed use are essentially comparable. The assisted living facility was a very modest and unintensive use. You're concerned about parking. Well, the other side of parking, of course, is traffic, because you've got to get in and out of the parking lot. The assisted living patients didn't generally have cars. We had, or they had, I wasn't involved at the time, far less than half, maybe a third, of what's proposed now in terms of parking, and it was empty all the time. Most of the parking was from employees coming to help take care of the patients, not from the patients themselves. Assisted living residents don't go off to work every morning, or don't go to school. They don't run back and forth to the supermarket, and the town hall, and the dump, and the pharmacy, and the post office. They don't have children going to and from school and other activities. The functional activities of an assisted living facility are far less and far different from a multifamily housing project with twenty-six apartments, and twenty-six families of some number living in them. Now, you started to discuss a couple of times the variance criteria, and we never seem to get back to the actual criteria. I have a copy of Chapter Forty-eight, Section Ten, if any of you would like to read the actual language. But it essentially requires five things, and you have to find all five of them to even have the opportunity to grant a variance. The applicant must demonstrate that they will suffer a substantial hardship because of the application to the bylaw. They have to show you that that hardship is related to some special circumstances affecting this property, not the district, not the neighborhood, but this property. They have to show you that those special circumstances somehow relate to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the property. Not its size, not its location, but soil conditions, shape, or topography. They have to demonstrate to you that if you were to grant the relief, doing so would not cause any substantial detriment to the public. And lastly, they have to show you that granting the relief would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Now, affordable... I mean, multifamily housing is allowed in four different districts in town. Each of them has its own requirements for density. It happens that in this district, it requires a minimum of ten acres of land, regardless of how many units are there, a minimum of ten acres of land, and that the total density developed is not more than eight bedrooms per acre. This lot is 1.89 acres, less than one-fifth of the minimum threshold of ten acres. And the thirty-three bedrooms proposed is, as someone else mentioned, approximately eighteen per acre, more than double the maximum density that the bylaw allows. You've asked a couple of times what the hardship is. And the hardship seems to be that they can't do what they want to do with the property. Nothing else. They have a use that they think is the more profitable use of this property than what's there now and what could be there otherwise. And there's nothing wrong with making a profit. Nobody faults them for that. But the purpose of a variance is not to maximize somebody's business profit from doing something with a piece of property that they're not supposed to do. The purpose of zoning is to protect the value of all the land in a district by clustering together compatible uses and separating incompatible uses. And town meeting decided that in this district, multifamily housing should have a minimum of ten acres of land. And this doesn't. So the hardship, if there is any, results from the fact that the lot's too small. And size is not soil, shape, or topography. A lot being too small is not the basis for a variance. Even though the variance is couched in terms of the use to be proposed, it's really a dimensional variance. It's really dimensions in Table Two, that require the ten acres for any multifamily housing in the MRL zone, and have the eight-per-acre bedroom limit. That's what's really at stake. That's the bylaw that they can't comply with. They've mentioned the building. The building is suited for this use, that it's this large building and maybe not suited for a lot of other things that this use or this district might allow for. But I would suggest to you that the building that's there now is the product of four or five decisions that you and your predecessors have made over the years. The property in back nineteen-seventy-nine got a special permit to revive the inn that historically had been in the front building. In nineteen-eighty-three, there was a variance granted to allow the owner's apartment on the third floor. In nineteen-eighty-four, there was another special permit to add eight more bedrooms. In nineteen-eighty-six, there was another special permit to add in addition to the third floor. A property owner can't come before the board repeatedly and say, "Can I make my building bigger and bigger and bigger?" And then come back and say, "My building's too big. I need a variance." It doesn't work that way. You can't create your own hardship by developing, or even over-developing, a piece of property. As was mentioned earlier, the applicant is not a novice in this industry, nor to this site. It was indicated earlier tonight and last night in front of the planning board that they sat down with the town planner and town staff before they even bought the property, and knew all about what the zoning was, what was and wasn't allowed, and what relief would be needed to do different things. So they came into this and bought this property with their eyes wide open. If that inability now to do what they want to do is the basis for their hardship, then they brought that upon themselves by buying it with full knowledge of what they could and couldn't do. The last criteria that you really haven't gotten to for a variance is for you to find that granting the relief would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. As I said, there are four different zones where you can have multifamily housing. Each has a different area requirement. This one happens to be the most restrictive in terms of at least the threshold requirement of ten acres. For you to disregard that requirement of ten acres and say, "Well, 1.89, that's close enough." I don't mean to belittle it, but it's not even close. If it were, you know, nine-point-eight acres or something, maybe you could think about that. But to reduce it to down to less than two, and to reduce it to less than any other district that allows multifamily housing, is a complete disregard for the vote of town meeting and the intent of that requirement. It does not satisfy the criteria for a variance. Now, Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing I'd like to address with you tonight. May I come forward and just bring some materials to the board for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, voting... It ends at Mr. Armstrong there.
As I said, the relief they've asked for is from the ten-acre requirement and from the eight-bedroom-per-acre density cap. That's all they've applied for, and that's all you could even consider tonight. But there is one other bylaw that they haven't asked you for relief from. And I refer to Section 325-18L. And it reads in part, "No multifamily dwellings may be erected on any lot in an MRL or MRL-1 district, the geographic center of which is closer than fifteen-hundred feet to the geographic center of any lot upon which multifamily dwellings with more than four dwellings are constructed." In other words, you can't have a multifamily dwelling within fifteen-hundred feet of another multifamily dwelling site, center of the lot to center of the lot. It happens that the property behind this has already been mentioned. Country Meadows Condominiums is the abutting property to the rear of this. I don't know how many units it has. Their website says sixty-three, I believe. It doesn't look like that many if you look at the assesses' map or photo, but in any event, it's multifamily housing, and it's well less than fifteen-hundred feet away. The photo I've given you, I'm not a surveyor. I wouldn't try to do Mr. McNevidge's job for him. But Google Earth does permit you to get at least an approximate scale of distances. And I've had it add two lines to that photograph. I had to darken them with a pen so you could see them. But the shorter of the two is approximately seven-hundred feet from the center of this site to the center of the Country Meadows condominium site. The longer red line is just over a thousand feet. So all of it is well within fifteen-hundred feet. So regardless of the variance they've asked from you tonight, they cannot operate this use at this site, at least not without a second variance, which they haven't asked for. So I would suggest to you that for any and all of these reasons, there is not a basis for you to grant a variance tonight, and you ought not to do so. And I ask you to deny this petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to this application? No one? Someone? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jean Monjello, and I live at 327 Bank Street, which is right across the street from the former Royal. I don't think that we're here to dispute the need for a housing. I mean, it's certainly an issue on a national level, a state level, and a local level. There's no disagreement that there's a housing crisis. I think where there is discourse, however, is in the need for appropriate housing. As a former public health nurse for the city of Boston, I've seen firsthand the negative sequela of overcrowding, which includes waste issues, waste management, environmental concerns, the lack of green space, traffic issues, and parking. And I've been the recipient of having parking, people parking on my front lawn. I live on Bank Street. When you go to confront someone who's parking on your front lawn, you take your life in your hands, believe me, and child safety concerns. I think when we try and place as many residents as possible in a structure that wasn't designed for that purpose, it doesn't seem to be in the best interest of the potential renters, the neighborhood, or the community at large. Zoning laws exist for a reason, but not so that they can be collectively overruled by vague promises and unsubstantiated hypotheses, which is what I've kind of heard tonight. I have a couple of questions. I think some of them have already been addressed, but I just wanted to put it on the record. Is this... Question number one, is this structure the best and most... Is this the best and most appropriate use as a multifamily facility or multifamily dwelling? In condo... If it was a condominium, there would be pride in ownership, tax revenues for the town, equity for the buyers instead of profits for the developers. If certainly, if profits are of interest to the developers, which I'm sure they are, we all live in this capitalistic society, condos would provide money upfront and would also provide an opportunity for self-governance through condo associations. My second question would be, what are the current developers' ties to the community? I think that's somewhat been answered, and I'm a little shaky on that. And also, the traffic study. I mean, the traffic is just, again, having been the proud recipient of a car crashing into their front door in their living room with the traffic on Parallel Street, crossing over to Bank Street and not seeing the sign, and coming through my lawn and through my front door, traffic is an issue. And certainly, with the multifamily dwelling, I would be very, very concerned about that. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this application?
Yes, my name's Raymond Markey, and I live at Two Englewood Drive. And they have... I've managed property in Portland, Maine, for twenty years, apartments. And I was an onsite manager. And at least a couple of times a month, I'd have to go onsite to people to tell them to quiet down. And I know for a fact, when there's no onsite manager, parties are going to go. And parking is not anywhere near enough, parking for the amount of units they're putting in. I know that for a fact, because we had more than two parking spaces per unit, and there were two bedrooms. And it still wasn't enough. Now, people can have their own cars Friday nights, Saturday nights. People are going to come to visit, two couples, two cars, and it's just going to go on and on. And the traffic is bad enough, and it's just going to make it a lot worse. And it's going to be a lot of noise. And I had to call the police more than once to come to quiet people down. And I was on... I lived onsite, but I still had to call police. And I didn't call police until after I went to see them, to ask them to quiet down. And most of the time, they'd say, "I pay rent. I can do what I want." Well, that's not... That's not... It's just not the way it is. And there's going to be all kinds of problems, and I know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Attorney Zender, any final comments?
Well, I... Obviously, I think we're going to be asking you for a continuance of this matter to address at least some of the concerns that the board has and some things that you're looking for, one of which is parking. I think the lighting, I've heard lighting.
I also think you need to do a traffic study.
Yeah, yeah, I was kind of working...
You've got to show what's there now and what your traffic expert anticipates with twenty-six units, thirty-three bedrooms.
Yeah, I'd like to get a sense of the board. I mean, traffic studies cost money, take time.
I also think you need to work on the, what I think were very valid legal points that Attorney Reed raised, because I don't see you're getting to a variance, just speaking for myself.
Well, see, that's where the question about the traffic study came in. I'm not going to go out and have...
In addition to all the other problems.
If you say, "Well, that's a great traffic study, and that helps us understand Bank Street," but you can't meet the various criteria. So if we're not going to meet, if this board... And again, I tell my clients, "Come to the first hearing to listen." You know, you don't come to the first hearing to talk, because you know the project. If this board, if the majority of this board, or a majority of the members that are voting against us think that they can't find a way past the variance criteria, you know, I'm not sure we're going to want to spend a lot more money on this particular part of the process. So I'm here to listen as well as what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman.
All right, why don't we take a straw poll, non-binding? We've done this before. We won't close the public hearing, in case you do want to come back with additional info. We'll just take a straw poll of the voting members on this case. Ms. Mueller, how would you vote if it were to... We were voting today on the variance request? Mr. Hill? Mr. Hilliard?
I'm, I'm having a hard time making a decision because there are so many outstanding issues that I haven't seen. I'm, I'm, I am concerned about the fact that there's no evidence on the hardship, on the legal side of the hardship. Without further evidence, I'd probably have to go no.
Yeah, I would vote no. I, I just don't see that the hardship has, requirement has been met. Mr. Donahue?
I'll file that the variance requirement's been met.
Mr. Armstrong?
I would like to see the project proceed.
So there you have it. That would be enough to be fatal for the variance request.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask about the parking? The, the town is the one that prescribes how many parking spaces you have to provide for a dwelling unit. And in this case, it's one and a half parking spaces per unit. And that, I think, recognizes not everyone just needs one parking space, but maybe not every unit needs two parking spaces. The town prescribes that. And so we've provided two more spaces than what the town prescribes we must have. And just that, uh, how do we, I, I, I've, usually, the boards or the neighbors are arguing for constructing no more than what's required by the zoning. You don't want extra parking spaces because of the other things. You've got more pavement and more runoff and all those various things. So if, if we would accommodate and try to come back with something, there's, there's no, how do I know what's enough? I mean, if it's five more spaces or ten, it just, there's no criteria to say how many a project needs to have.
Well, I guess the town also requires ten acres. If you folks had ten acres, I wouldn't be concerned about parking, because we'd have plenty of room. You could do, like, uh, the Witchma Harbor, have the emergency grass parking lot spaces. If you need them, you need them, and if not, it's grass.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm.
You know, you folks have, what, one point eight nine acres? And, and I've been to the site, we all have, I think. The way of the topography is, you're, you're gonna have a real issue carving any more parking spots there.
You, you, look, you have, you have a big agenda tonight. You did exactly what I asked you to do, and, and I wanna thank every one of you for answering the question of how you would vote, because some boys don't like to do that, but it helps us with the decision-making process. What I'm going to do is ask the board for a continuance to your next meeting. It may be that we submit a request that you consider withdrawal without prejudice in between now and when that meeting comes up, and then ask you to address that request at your next meeting. I'm hopeful this is a board that will favorably consider such a request if it comes before you. I'm not asking you to answer that question now. That's not fair. But I would like to ask for a continuance to your next meeting, if you don't mind.
All right, I'll move that case twenty, twenty dash oh-two be continued to our February, is it twenty-sixth, meeting? And we'll put it on as the.
It'll be later in the agenda, because I've already had the others ask for continuances.
All right, we'll just put it wherever it's gonna be in the agenda.
And final question I have to ask, if we do elect to request a withdrawal without prejudice, do we need to attend? Do I need to come attend the meeting with that request? Is your practice of your board to entertain those motions with or without the applicant presence?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Is it, is it the board's normal practice, when, when requested to withdraw a matter without prejudice, do you require the applicant to attend in that case normally?
I, I don't see any need for the, you haven't done it normally.
I'm just asking what your practice is.
We've done it by written request.
We can do it, yeah. I don't see an issue. We're not gonna make it come in for.
I, I would ask for a continuance then, if you don't mind.
So you, right now, there's a motion to continue. Is that what you want?
That's what we want, please.
Okay, we need a second? We got a motion on the floor, sir, you're too late. Do we have a second on the motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Continued.
Thank you for your time.
Save it for next time, sir.
Thank you.
February twenty-sixth.
That's why I do so much by email. Because you have to make all of those cases.
Yeah. Yeah, I, well, I don't know, I'm mixed, very mixed on it. They don't mean the requirements, at least for tonight.
All right, everybody. All right, Ms. It is now almost ten o'clock. We will start this case. It will not be finished tonight. We will be continuing it, I'm sure. But I'll have our clerk call the case. It's, uh, what's that?
Should the applicant be given the opportunity to not, at this time, because if it's going to be continued?
Well, we would like to, well, let me ask you this. Well, I'm not sure which five would be sitting, but as long as there's gonna be five at the next meeting, we would like to start and then.
That's right, we have two not gonna be here next morning, right? One, two.
All right, so I guess I would ask if you got, that the people who aren't gonna be here don't formally sit, just, I mean, you're here.
Well, we, let's see, who's gonna be here? Ms. Mueller, me, one, two.
Probably gonna be here.
One, two, three, four. You're gonna be here next minute?
Yes, I'm not a hundred percent yet.
So if he's not here, you still probably only have four.
All right, well, that, that puts us in, in a little bit of a bind, you know, because if three members aren't gonna be here next. Is there a reason, and I know you said this at the beginning of the meeting, but I might have missed why. I, I know you wanted a, I was at the planning board last night, we went till eleven fifteen. So is there a reason why you have the hard stop at ten thirty tonight?
I think people get tired, and we're all volunteers.
I know, I'm not disagreeing.
The public is out here, you know, we're not paid up here, ladies and gentlemen. So we need to put a reasonable limit. People do have lives that are still working for a living.
I, I, I know, I just, all right, if, we would like to start. If there is any way you can go a bit after eleven, uh, ten thirty, just so that people can, you know, we can get as far as we can get.
Well, but we're not gonna, all these people are here, I assume, most of them for this case, and they're not gonna get hurt tonight.
Assuming everybody's here for this case.
So we're not going beyond ten thirty for you, when they're not gonna get hurt. So I mean, no personal offense, Attorney Singer, but, you know, fair is fair here. So, let's see, we will have voting, Ms. Mueller, me, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Capoli. Hopefully, he'll be here. That way, he'll have your five. And if not, you can go forward with four or continue it again.
Okay, no, we appreciate that.
So let's call the case. Jim?
Andrew Hall, case number twenty twenty dash zero three. Andrew Hall's successor trustee of Emulus Hall Realty Trust, through his agent, Andrew, attorney Andrew Singer, applied for variance to redevelop a previously disturbed and commercially-used portion of property located in two zoning districts in connection with a seasonal miniature golf course. Application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-two, table one, use regulations, is set forth in MGL chapter forty-eight, section ten. Property is located at three forty-six, three twenty-eight, zero Sisson Road, twenty-one fossils, N two dash zero, N one dash zero, and in a CH dash one and RM zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Singer, if you could please introduce yourselves for the record and who is with you.
I thank you, yes. Good evening for the record. My name is Andrew Singer, an attorney in Dennis Quay, here representing the applicant. With me at the table is Dan Crotto, who's the project engineer. With us in the audience is Shannon Goheen, who is the landscape architect for the project. And we also have Suave Osef and Steve Gepoyan, who are the project applicants. So we are all here this evening. We have this aerial photograph that we're gonna discuss primarily. You have copies of it. We had given you color copies of everything. This is a split-zone piece of land. It is a piece of land that you all know inherently well, because you live in Harwich. This is the piece of land that contains the antique center store, the go-karts, and then the large disturbed area that has been used for industrial and commercial use for decades upon decades, and is currently with storage. The unique thing about this, well, a few things unique, because we're here for a variance, so I'll tell you what that is. The commercial line comes right around this way, and it's on the plan in yellow. So you can see this obviously much better in your, what you have. What is being proposed for the miniature golf course is to the design that's on the plan. A portion, about half or so, of the golf course itself has been proposed to be on the, a redeveloped portion of the already cleared and commercially-used part. It's in the residential portion of this lot. So it is a split-zone lot, roughly right down, you know, the middle there. The back half is residential, and then the front half is all the commercially-used right now. What we are proposing to do, as you can see on the plan, is to locate, and again, you have the, I know, I can see them in your hands, you have all the detailed plans of the layout of the golf course. We are proposing to upgrade the site and to continue or have this use on that portion of the site. And there are certain, in, in talking to the town, we met with town staff. We've met with the conservation commission, who's approved it. We're meeting with the planning board in a few weeks. The planning board wanted you to go first, which is why we're here tonight before the planning board, because this is a situation where they said, because we're redeveloping the portion of the lot that is in the commercial, that is in the residential zone, it needs to use variance. This must be your night for variances. I'm not sure, I've been here in a while, where you've had three on the agenda in one night. I won't go through the variance criteria. You know them, you've been debating them for the last two and a half hours. But I will go through how we suggest that we meet them with the proposal. The unique conditions here are twofold. One, in most particularly, is soil conditions. There is a flood plain, the front of the property, and this is, I'm overgeneralizing now, but the front of the property where closest to Sisson Road is in the flood plain. And so in that area, it floods, it's an issue. What we have done, and one of the reasons for the variance, for the soil conditions, is we have pushed the more developed part of the business, meaning the golf course itself, away and out of the flood plain. Conservation approved that, because they liked the fact that we were lessening the possibility of storm damage and flood events, because all you'd have in the flood zone now is parking. And if it's raining that much, the business isn't open, it's an outside use, the parking lot's gonna be empty. So this, the soil conditions of the flood plain at the lowest front part of the property is a soil condition impacting this property. In addition, the property rises from Sisson Road up to the back, and, and it goes even beyond it. If you look in the aerial photograph, and the, the condominiums here, which is where I believe most of the people in the audience are probably from, that's at a high point of elevation approximately thirty-two or so. The golf course itself is approximately half that height. And so one of the things as well with the topography is that we have this rising slope. You can construct a golf course, which has some undulations and holes and things, into the topography and use that topography, whereas you couldn't, you know, level it for parking as easily, and you wouldn't want to. So the conditions that we have, the threefold conditions for the uniqueness of the site are the soil conditions, the topography, and the historical development of the commercially-industrially-used area, which is storage, sand. You can actually see in the aerial, I mean, you've been by the site, you've seen the trailers, you've seen the boats. You see the sand piles go up, the sand piles go down, the trucks go through. You know the site. Forty-eight, section ten talks about impacts of particular land or structures. Here, the land is also the use of the land. And what is being proposed, so those are the hardship. We believe that when you look at all of those criteria, you have a hardship under forty-eight, ten, and, and the Harwich zoning bylaw. The other criteria, of no substantial detriment and not derogation, you know, undue derogation from the bylaw. The way this has been designed is to be protective and to comply with all other requirements. So for example, building coverage on the property will conform. Site coverage, both, in both zones, the site coverage that's allowed in the residential zone as well as the commercial zone will both comply. This entire triangle of vegetation that is being retained in its natural state and a significant part of what is now disturbed area in the residential zone is going to be replanted with green screen and additional planting. So where all these trailers are and the boat, all of this area is gonna come out. And so not only are we maintaining the natural vegetation, which is, which is, from this building to the golf course is, at its closest point, is approximately two hundred feet, and it's all vegetated between it. And that is going to be there and improved with the green screen. So we'd submit that, that will be an improvement. In addition, the active use of the storage, as I said, will be gone naturally. You're gonna have a seasonal use for the miniature golf course. The miniature golf course is actually allowed by special permit in the commercial zone of the property. That's why we're not here before you for any relief from that, that planning board's looking at that. From the, uh, this is just to shift that part as we're talking about. And in fact, because of the re-vegetation in the commercials, in the residential zone, and I apologize, like some of your cases, I'm speaking kinda fast. So if I go too fast, you have questions, we will talk about it. There will be a net decrease of square footage of commercial space in the residential zone. So we're actually decreasing the non-conforming use of the residential zone, and we are decreasing the intensity of that use, because what you're gonna have is a seasonal recreation use as opposed to the year-round use that's there today. Another reason, maybe one of the biggest reasons for not being detrimental effect is the environmental benefits. Of A, getting rid of this land, the use that's there today, which is wide open, there's no controlled parking, there's no controlled drainage, there's no controlled anything. I'm talking not about the go-karts and the antique store, those are perfectly fine. I'm talking about the vacant portion, portion of the land that we're dealing with. Those are all going to be upgraded with drainage, with landscaping, with screening, with appropriate lighting that we'll talk about. All of this will demonstrate that there is not gonna be a substantial derogation or harm to the public good. As far as access, curb cuts, driveways, and drainage I mentioned will be upgraded. As you know, when you've been by there, the, the curb cut from Sisson Road is, is wide open and unchanalized. When we met with the town staff, including with the police department who was there, they recommended, and what you see here, is a re, and it's better on the plans you have in front of you, but for the public. It is a change, the curb cut area will be channeled, there'll be an island put in, and it'll be channeled with some other, there's both an island in the middle of the, that access, and there's also another island next to where the parking is. So the access onto and off of the property on the Sisson Road is going to be improved by channelizing and improving the flow there. In addition, the police mentioned that someday in the future, their goal is to get rid of that island that is in the middle of Sisson Road there, which causes headaches in and of itself. When that happens, which we have no control over, but when that happens, that will also be a further improvement. But what the applicant is proposing to do is to improve that access, which actually is a dual benefit. It's not only going to service the miniature golf, it's gonna service the go-karts. So the existing use, which is there today, will have its access and curb cuts improved by channelizing and improving the existing curb cut that is there. There is an existing curb cut out onto Harold Street, which is in the commercial CH one zone, which will stay. And you can see it on the plan, it'll be accessed into the park, the upgraded parking area. In addition, what is being proposed with the seasonal miniature golf course? And again, you're looking at just the part, I understand, that is in the residential zone, but we're looking at this whole use, whole property is what's before you. When you look at the intensity of what's allowed in the commercial zone in this property, which is deep, under zoning, under the zoning bylaw, you can have retail stores. which is deep, under zoning, under the zoning bylaw, you can have retail stores, restaurants, repair facilities, marine uses, among other uses. The intensity of the use that we're proposing for a seasonal mini-golf, which will only be open on the good weather days, is much less than what you would be getting or could get, not you, but the, you know, what could be done, for an annual year-round allowed and permitted uses on the property. And so, we submit that the proposal will again be not a harm and not a derogation because the commercial land could be used for much greater uses. And what we're trying to do is do something that will be more environmentally protective with a seasonal use than what could be done. As far as lighting, all of the lighting for the miniature golf, it'll be capped. The poles will be no higher than 14 feet. They will be dark sky compliant and in compliance with all of the Harwich regulations. The, as I mentioned before, the condominium elevation is approximately twice what the golf course elevation is. The golf course elevation is approximately 17. You add a 14-foot pole, dark sky compliant, the top of the pole, which is shielded down and facing away from the condominiums to the back, will still be less high than the condominiums. And so, this has been designed purposely to ensure that there'll be no negative impact to any of the surrounding properties. And we did give you a photometric plan that demonstrates that lighting will not impact off-site, which is again, part of the requirement. So lighting will be in compliance. That, the same goes true for noise by the, and you have them on the plans. When you look at the features on the golf course itself, the features themselves, the green screen that'll be planted to augment the existing forest land, and the lower elevation will all help to block and channel sound down towards Sisson Road in the commercial zone. And a miniature golf course by definition is going to be a lot quieter than a go-kart facility. And the go-karts exist, and so, in the commercial zone. And so, the noise we submit will not be a detriment to any of the residential community. This has been done again intentionally to try to make this use blend in as well as possible with the area. And we submit that when you look at this part of town and you just look at this property, having another recreational use that's otherwise allowed in the commercial zone on this property makes so much sense. When people come to the site, they'll be spending more time at the site, which means they won't be getting back on the street and going off to wherever it might be if it was in another location. So this location lends itself very well to continued and expanded recreational use as exists today. With all that, I'm going to stop talking, and we'd be happy to entertain your initial questions.
Okay, before I start, questions on the board, just on your photograph, the overlay?
Yes.
Just, what are the little green hash boxes and the little blue hash boxes on the plan there?
The green are landscape islands that would be in the parking area.
Okay.
And the blue are?
The, Dan Crowell from Mariner Engineering. The planning board zoning requirement is to have 10% inside the parking area of green space. That's the green. The blue is the disability walkways, the five-foot disability walkways.
Okay.
In between the, the disability spots are.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Obviously, lighting would be a major problem and noise to the neighbors and the use, use of this area. You said there was a plan that showed the light density?
Yes, there's a photometric plan that we had dropped off. Find it again.
I don't think it was in our package.
We did file it. Well, there's a, well, you have a landscape plan, and the landscape architect is here as well. All right, well, I, I will make sure that you have it. I'm not going to be able to find it, you know, naturally sitting right here, even though I know you have it, or it's in the file. So we will.
Should I go again?
No, at this point. But we will, I mean.
Yeah, if you could give it to Mr. Delaney, then she'll.
Yeah, we'll follow up with it.
Before, next meeting.
But it does demonstrate that the, and we'll do this at the next meeting, but it does demonstrate that the lighting will be met on site.
Question. What time at night will they close?
The next meeting?
No.
No, this busy. I think she's asking hours of operation.
Sorry, ma'am, it's not been open to the public yet. Sorry, you've got to hold your question. The board gets to go first, and the public's not going to get to go tonight. In fact, the board probably won't get to go completely tonight.
It's an easy question.
So we'll become, well, maybe, but it's the wrong time. Mr. Murphy?
We'll be happy to discuss. We'll be here after the meeting.
Well, in the sake of time, I'll let others ask. Just get as many hours as we can on the table. Ms. Mueller.
You're up.
I have two questions. Actually, my first question was, what are the planned months, days, and hours of operation?
Okay.
And my second question is, we've heard some ardent comments this evening about the town needing more residential space. Here you are with a proposal to convert residential space to commercial space. Have you thought about flipping it? Has the owner considered making the whole thing residential and building something there?
Okay.
Rhetorical question.
All right. The, I will tell you, as you've seen in the application, my applicant, my client are proposed tenants of the property. They're not the owners of the property. The owners have agreed to this. I will note that while this is residential space, it has been used actively for industrial and commercial use for many, many, many decades. So it is residential, but it has been used for not, at least the portion we're talking about.
Misused.
You know, but it's grandfathered, you know, and that's, that's under zoning. It can continue and, and by right. And so, that's why we're here, you know. I'm, I'm, we have no idea, I have no idea how it started, but the fact is it's there, and that's what we're talking about. As far as hours of operation in months? 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, when the weather is not inclement. And what are your months of operation?
May, June, July, or September.
May to, to answer, go ahead, May to September, 10 to 10.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, yes. When there's good weather. I've done a number of these projects, types of businesses on the Cape, and as you know, you lose a lot of time to inclement weather. So that's the maximum.
May to September would be probably only weekends.
Oh, okay. Just for the record, that, that is one of the applicants. He said May and September, the shoulders, would probably just be the weekends.
No further questions at this time.
Mr. Hilliard.
According to the code requirements in parking, do you have sufficient parking for not only the miniature golf, but also for the go-karts?
Yes. And one of the things, it wasn't relevant for your, or on your application, but we have requested a waiver from the planning board of eight spaces which you can fit, but we're asking to leave those as green space and lessen until needed, so the parking for both uses complies and would be shared between them.
Are they both lots owned by the same owner?
There are, yes, there are two lots here. The, the line goes kind of through the middle, but yes.
So, so I understand, what you're trying to do is to get a variance to put commercial use onto residential zoning.
To reuse the disturbed commercially-used part of the residential for that, correct.
I, I have a concern when you talk about the height, you've got something, I think you said 16 feet, 16 feet down below and 32 feet on elevation.
Seventeen to 32, give or take, yes.
It seems to me that the higher you are, the more you would recognize lighting below you as opposed to the opposite. If you were down below, you wouldn't see lighting, but if you're up above, you're going to see it. That just tells me that what you need to be very careful about is having backshielded lights. And so on and so forth.
They'll be fully shielded and dark sky compliant.
I, I'm not, I'm not voting because I will not be here at the next meeting, but my, my concern is, I, I don't know that, that, I've heard that argument on why, why you get to the variance statutory requirements going into the residential district. You may want to try that one again, but.
Yeah, I, on that same theme, I'd like to see, when you come back next time, tell us why residential cannot be built back in the RM zone. I don't know if you've got a 40,000-square lot back there. I know elevation at the, the tree line starts to go up fairly quickly, but I think that's what I'd like to see. The other thing is, I know we had a lot of comments from the neighbors about the traffic onto Harold Street. I'd love to see that curb cut go away onto Harold. I'd rather have you put a second curb cut on Sisson. But Harold is where all the residential is. I mean, there's houses when you first go up, and then you get to the condos, and they are very narrow streets up there. Now, I didn't go all the way on Harold. I stopped at the condos, but from the comments of the neighbors, apparently it goes on and it's used as a cutthroat, cutthroat. So I'd like you to really take a hard look at that, closing that curb cut on Harold and putting a second one somewhere in Sisson. I think you could probably do that by reconfiguring a little bit, even if you put some parking.
The separation distances from Harold, but we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, but I'm not sure it would meet the code.
You've got room in the RM zone there, right where the dirt is, begins there to the right of the red light to put parking spots, right of the red line there.
There's a certain 50-foot setback that we just make, so on the other, I guess keeping that same distance away from Harold as Route 28.
And that curb cut is there, and we'll look at it, Mr. Chairman, but I would.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of land there.
I would suggest, though, that that existing curb cut allows people to come out onto an existing street at an existing intersection on Sisson Road without introducing another curb cut right in that same area, because Harold Street's still going to have its curb cut on Sisson. You're not getting rid of that.
I don't know if that's really a curb cut. I'd have to see what the definition, I don't know the definition, but I mean, it's just.
Well, I've driven it, so I know it's.
Well, yeah, I drove in that way too, but I wouldn't call it a curb cut. It's just dirt. You just drive in, there's no markings.
Well, that's part of the whole thing, is that this is an improvement, a significant improvement to that area, but we'll, we'll look at that.
Public, please. That's, let's see, was there anything else I had? I think that's all I need.
Okay.
And it, yeah, I guess one of the things I would also want to see is no food or drinks served there.
No food service was part of the.
I think that's not a good thing there at that location. Mr. Donahue.
Just two things. I have a question with regard to the golf course.
Yes.
And the buildings on the golf course. What is the maximum height of those windmills, homes, the light house? We keep discussing the, the height of the actual property as opposed to the height of, the lights are 17 feet.
Or 14, yes.
14 feet.
We'll get you those answers.
Okay. Because they're going to be, I'm sure they're going to be illuminated.
Well, all of that was, and Mr. Osef just said that the structures are approximately 12 to 14 feet height. They're not very tall, but that was all accounted for in the photometric plan, but we will follow up on that with you. Thank you.
Would it, just a second, last question. Would it be feasible to divide this into two pieces, making only one golf course?
Can you?
This is two separate golf courses here?
It is a 36, as we've mentioned, it's 36 holes, correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Would it be feasible, if you cannot get the variance, turn this into a single golf course of 18 holes? I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay. It would still be in the residential zone, but at least partially.
Structural.
That's, appreciate the question.
Is, do you know, is the go-kart track, does that close at 10 o'clock now? Would it be the same as a go-kart track, or? So the whole?
Different operators, but, yeah.
No, that's why I'm just asking. So that wouldn't change at all? And those are generally the, the same hours as the go-kart track? Okay. And then I just wanted to, again, double-check on the wood section and that, that triangle near the condominiums.
Yes.
None of that is going to change, other than, under the existing plan?
Correct.
Other than the industrial things that are.
Correct, yeah. This wooded area, which is natural, stays natural under this particular plan. And this area would be, you know, would be revegetated when the trailers and the boats and all that use came out.
So you're really not taking down any trees, other than there's a mention of invasive species, but that's.
Oh, yes, yes, no, trees are not coming.
And, and you would be adding some as well, you said?
Correct.
I just think that, just very briefly.
Sure.
We intend to put a lot of pine trees and some cedar trees in that area.
That, that triangle?
In a vegetated area in the golf course. So the ultimate goal is that anyone looking down, any of the neighbors, won't see anything except green.
So additional pines right next to the, that triangle we were talking about? Is that what we were, is that what we were saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you would basically have pines.
I see. Yep.
Through here, and also juniper and cedar, and other various ecologically beneficial plants.
Thank you.
Mr. Bulley.
Thank you. Was there any other way to place the, the golf course on the lot, which might be less intrusive to the neighbors? I mean, it, could you, could you not put that back, the golf, the mini-golf course on the street and then use the back part for parking, or?
Oh, but that's the whole, that's the variance. Take, back to Mr. Hilliard's comment. Could you do it? Yes. A, you'd still need relief because you'd have the commercial parking for the use in the residential zone, but his, but conservation found that having the golf, having it this way is environmentally protective because the structures, the light poles, the, the golf facility will be out of the floodplain. And, and if you're putting, and you'd be actually then putting more noise, more lights in the back of the property because you have cars coming in, they're noisier, they have headlights, you know, so this design actually feels as, we believe, is very protective because it's preserving all of this residential area, and it is restoring a significant amount of what's already been disturbed and denuded and is, with the grandfathered use.
Yeah, I was driving up there, and that was my, my thought. Is there, is there another way that this could be placed so that we could be commerce, but we also protect our neighbors?
Yeah, well, and I appreciate that. I guess, and we'll have to have more conversation, we, we honestly believe, and hopefully you'll ultimately agree, that this is the most protective of the neighbors. Now, not everyone's going to agree necessarily with that, but I hope that you guys do, and we'll, we'll keep talking with you about it. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, last one.
Yeah.
Are you keeping, is the antique store staying?
Yes, the antique store, go-karts, no, no impact to those. The only impact to the go-karts is obviously improving the parking and the access as, as you see on the plan. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to stop here. Chair, how many cases do we have? Do you have already?
We have three new. We have three that were continued, then the one that was continued prior to this, whether or not they withdraw.
But we have six for sure.
We have six for sure.
Okay. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, wait a minute. We're going to have to continue this case until next month, which will be February 26th. Wait a minute, sir, please. We have six cases ahead of this one, so probably you would be safe to come at 8:00, not at 7:00, but that's up to you. The applicant will probably be filing updated plans for some of this stuff, so you might want to come and see Ms. Delaney before the meeting, if you want to see any updates that have been filed by the applicant. So, yes, sir, in the yellow.
May I please speak just for one moment?
Well, we have an, oh, no, because we, we have an open it. I don't want to open it because the board, I think, is still going here, so.
Simply one comment?
No.
I mean, we've got here.
It's not open for public. If, once I continue the case, if you want to get up and say something, the case, the meeting's done, as far as this case goes, you can say whatever you want, but not right now because we're going to continue the case. So I just move that we continue case 2020-032, our February meeting, which is on February 26, 2020. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay, this case will be moved.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
I thank you all for coming.
We'll see some of you next month.
If you want to say something now that we've continued the case.
Off the record?
Well, we're still being, the, the meeting is still open, so it's on the record. But if you want to make a gratuitous. If you want to make a gratuitous comment, I guess we can't stop you, I guess I could, but I'm not going to.
With your indulgence, I mean, I'm a Beech Plum resident, Tom Jones, eleven F, and sat here tonight...
Excuse me, my name is Nick Paretto, I live over here in Harwichport, in those condominiums, right here.
Wait, wait a minute, the meeting, this case is...
You said the meeting is over, this gentleman said he'd stay.
This, I don't want to hear anything, we'll, we'll read, convene on February twenty-sixth on this case.
Can I get a quick motion to approve the minutes, did you all get a chance to read the minutes?
I have one minor change, which is on one of the cases, I don't, twenty-nineteen thirty-nine, I just want to say, a copy of which is attached here too, that is the conditions that we included, just flip a copy to it.
Okay.
And I'll give it to you, with that minor change, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the December four, twenty-nineteen meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye. Minutes approved.
Do we have anything else? I'll move that we close the meeting.
Second.
Close the hearing, second, Mr. Capoli, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done. We're off, Jack, thank you.